Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Thirsi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
All right, we're all here. On our agenda this evening, if you -- there's just one slight change that was noted on the website. We do not have the work session on the FY 2018 budget amendment number three, so that's not -- next week we will get that, and let me get out -- sorry, the rolling agenda. And so, next week, on March 14th, we'll have our youth council update. Our voting session next week will be a resolution condemning acts of gun violence and supporting the March for Our Lives and other efforts to reduce gun violence, a resolution affirming our support for the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, the first reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 budget amendment number three, and a resolution authorizing the closing of Ann Street for the Crossroads Farmers Market. Our work session will be with the CHEER Tacoma Park Renters Protection Group, discussing housing with our city council, and then we will have a presentation from the rental housing inspections and the -- the rental housing inspections and contract with Montgomery County. That's next week. And then, on Friday, March 16th, we have a community coffee for Ward Three. We'll meet at 8:00 in the morning at Mid-Atlantic Seafood at 6,500 New Hampshire Avenue. On Wednesday, March 21st, we're back here. We'll have a public hearing on traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Eastern Avenue and West Moreland Avenue. For the record, we will have the Safe Grow Photo Contest winners here. So last year was the first time we did a photo contest, a garden contest, around the city, and I think we're going to do it again this spring, and so the winners will be here on March 21st. Our voting session will be the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2018 budget amendment number three, and tentatively, we'll have a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work session on the 21st, we have preliminary results of the Tacoma Junction Traffic Study. This is the traffic study that the city commissioned. We will have a report back from the Commemoration Commission regarding recommendations on street names and a discussion of draft housing and economic development strategic plan and possible inflammation steps. And then, on Wednesday, March 8th, tentatively, because it's the fifth Wednesday of the month in March, we will not be meeting unless something comes up between now and then, but we will not be meeting then. I know. Now, we'll turn to public comments on voting items. Our first voting item is a resolution adopting the council priorities. Any comments on that? Next, we have a resolution regarding school facilities. Any comments on that? Next, we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a stormwater study. And our final voting item is a single reading ordinance awarding a renewable energy supplier contract for the switch to 100% renewable campaign. Any -- just general public comments this evening? Okay, moving right along then. I'll take council comments.
Sorry, we realized that something's not in the packet that was supposed to have been printed out, so she's going to have to go.
Oh, okay. As long as it's just that.
That's all.
All right. You're making me nervous over there. All right, any -- Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an announcement I've been requested to give from the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. They met and have decided on the theme for this year's parade. It is "A City of Dreamers," and they backed that up with some text. "Dreamers have played an important role in shaping Tacoma Park into the progressive, diverse community we love today. Starting with B.F. Gilbert's vision of a healthy resort town in the forest outside of Washington, D.C., farsighted dreamers shaped us into the unique community that is admired around the world. Yesterday's dreamers led us to implement one of the nation's first recycling programs, to take a stand against the dangers of nuclear technology, to ensure we have quality schools, to protect our environment, to implement rent controls so anyone can live here, and to make us a more sustainable community. The 2018 Independence Day celebration calls on today's dreamers to share their vision for Tacoma Park's future. Register your entry in this year's annual parade and help us -- help lead us into tomorrow." The 2018 grand marshal is the city's new police chief, Anthony Tony Duval, who dreams of changes to guide policing to higher levels through the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to take a moment and thank the county executive for having a ceremony at the Silver Spring Civic Center to rename the Great Hall the Buffalo Soldiers' Great Hall. It was a fantastic event. Some of you don't know, my father was a veteran, passed away this past Memorial Day, whose interment will be at Arlington National Cemetery this spring. But this was a great event to acknowledge the service of Black service members that have participated in the Army since War 11. War, 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 one. And I'm squinting this evening because I forgot my glasses, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dubala?
Yeah, hi. Real quick, three things. One is a program, it's not a city program, in any way, shape, or form, but it's a pretty cool program. It's this Saturday at Montgomery College Silver Spring Campus. Every girl can, from 9:00 to 2:30. It's for 5th through 8th grade girls. It's free for the 5th through 8th grade girls, and it's to expose them to a variety of professions and professional topics and the kinds of things they might study in college. Second thing, Thursday, March 15th, Larch Avenue sidewalk meeting to go over the sidewalk design here at the community center. Yeah, so that's a week from tomorrow. And then, a week from Tuesday, March 20th, Ward Two Community Meeting, meet and greet with our new police chief.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of announcements. Let's see, starting this weekend, a number of us will be attending the National League of Cities Conference. Two of our youth council members will be attending, and I believe Councilmember Smith and Kovar, are you all still on committees for -- and so I'm sure you'll be there. And the other news I have is that I've been asked to be the vice chair of the REAL Committee, the Racial Equity and Leadership Committee, and that will start this year at the conference, and I'm excited about that and to bring back learnings from that as we work on our racial equity work here in the city. And I just want to point out a thank you to our public work staff, our police department, and everyone else who pitched in to get us through the storm, not just on Friday, but through the weekend and for some people through Monday. And so, I just -- we know it was a really long weekend, and we hope we avoid the storm this weekend, so you get some time off. That's it for me. I'll turn it over to the city manager for her comments.
Thank you. I've got a number of important ones. I won't spend too much time on them, but I'm sure you'll want to be sharing them with your constituents. The first is an update on the Tacoma Junction schedule. I've approved a revised schedule. It's now posted on the website. This new schedule incorporates what had already been reported, which is that things -- in the way things are, get a little bit delayed, and so it is the approval of the schedule that has been reflected on the rolling agenda already. As part of the request for the schedule revision, NDC also requested postponement of the date by when a lease is to be signed with a primary tenant. Most tenants want to defer making that kind of a commitment until building permits are issued. I think this is a reasonable request, but it is something that's not, in my purview, too just okay. And so, that would be something that would be part of your discussion when NDC is before you in the months of April and May, as you review their various plans. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's a point where you will need to weigh in. One of several points, but that's one. We are working on trying to have an easier schedule than the very difficult Gantt chart that the developer has on the website. The next few steps, right now, traffic counts have been done for both the city's and the NDC's traffic studies, and so we'll be having our -- some preliminary findings, reporting the preliminary findings of our city traffic study before you on March 21st. NDC is scheduled to come here on April 4th to do their first kind of presentation of their draft site plan and preliminary site plan. That will -- I guess it's preliminary plan. That will be a presentation, then there'll be a number of work session discussions, and it wouldn't be until mid-May that you would take action. So I just wanted to have a sense that this isn't like everything will be decided on April 4th. It'll be your first -- it'll be your first taste of that, really, in a public way. I also, I wanted to update you, we've had a number of conversations with Montgomery County's on the commercial real property tax, and because what had been discussed with council is the idea of swapping out kind of the amount that we would get from the inventory tax for an increased amount on commercial property. Montgomery County is having an upgrade of its financial system right now, so it can't spend the time to do what changes would be needed. We'll find out a little bit more information in about two weeks, but the suspicion is -- the probability is that we would not be able to institute a commercial real property tax category for the FY 19 budget. One of the questions that comes from that is how do you classify commercial? And for -- one easy way that has been done includes multifamily properties as commercial property. That was not my sense of what the council wanted, and so we will have it broken out in a variety of ways for you to consider, but I just wanted to give you the heads up that those are the kinds of things that we'll come back to when we're talking about the resolution that's coming up on personal property tax. So there may be an opportunity to discuss a postponement for a year, or handling the money a different way, or that kind of thing. But I wanted to give you a heads up because we just found out about that yesterday. I got requests from residents and from Councilmembers Smith and Thirsi about the Montgomery County Purple Line Permanent Parking Area Public Hearing that went on last week, and what does that mean perhaps for Tacoma Park. It doesn't mean anything for us, but I have a lot of information that's here on this and a good link on -- to a specific document that Montgomery County has put together. Essentially, there's a way to get permit parking, just like we have permit parking when people request it, in Montgomery County, if you're around a metro station and they're considering the Purple Line stations to be in the same category. In that, if that were approved, then individual blocks still have to get petitions of two-thirds of the people on their block to request permit parking for that block, and so it needs to go through a process. Even if people want it, it's an eight to 12-month process, and that's only after the county actually approves the concept of this Purple Line Permit Parking Area, which will take time in and of itself. City of Tacoma Park has its own permit parking kinds of processes, so if we felt that we needed protection, either because people would be pushed into Tacoma Park or Tacoma Park residents, you know, otherwise felt impacted, we could take our own action. And so, I just want to reassure people that, you know, we actually have more flexibility than county residents do about how to design permit parking or other kind of parking restrictions for our communities. The other part I want to mention is that this doesn't have anything to do with construction parking. So there's been a number of folks in my neighborhood worried about contractor parking. That's a different discussion with the folks who are doing the project at the state and with the public-private group. So just wanted to give that information. You can share with your residents. I think that it's going to be a really long process. I don't know how many blocks in the county would actually opt in for this, but we have ways to help our residents if there's felt to be an impact.
And could you put this information on the website?
Yes, I mean, it's going to be on -- it's in my city manager report. It'll be posted on my link to that.
Right.
And we're happy to share.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to give an update briefly on the Tacoma Park Rec Center. For the last several months, city staff and park and planning staff have been taking the preparatory steps to what would be involved in a land transfer between park and planning and a city-owned piece of parkland. So far, we've obtained appraisals and surveys. Park and Planning has inspected the Rec Center for work that would be needed over the next several years. We've not seen the results yet of that inspection report, but once we get that, that would be the point of negotiation with Park and Planning about either making improvements to keep it going until we are ready to move to another step with the site, you know, or have the money to do so, to take care of it. Just wanted to let you know that we're in that state. In the meantime, the Friends of the Tacoma Park Rec Center have been very busy. They have -- and I do want to clarify for folks that they're an independent group, they're not a council-appointed committee. They've been contacting county council members, candidates, a variety of folks, asking them to support the Rec Center, to support keeping rec services and an improved facility on the east side of our city. I've received several inquiries from these various candidates who wanted some follow-up. Some people felt that maybe the city was not going to be interested in providing rec services to the east side of the city. I said, "I've not heard that." That wasn't part of the discussion. But many others simply want to know a little bit more about why this isn't part of tax duplication and what's the history of the property. And so, I've spoken with a number of folks about that. So I just wanted to share with you. We'll keep you posted as we get a little bit more information in, but pretty soon we'll need to sit down and share the information on the appraisals and the inspection report with you. We received notice, I guess it was yesterday, from WSSC that they are planning on replacing aging pipes on East West Highway just east of New Hampshire Avenue and about one block east of our Ethan Allen Gateway Project that's planning to be started in about three weeks. And so, we are -- we've got calls in to the folks. I don't think -- you hadn't gotten through, right? We got calls in to the folks to find out a little bit more information on the timing, what some of the areas of interest are, what's the maintenance of traffic that they're projecting, and how might that impact our project, and also just what the timing really is vis-à-vis our project. So it's like everything else, we always have another utility project.
And then, there's also --
Did you put your --
There's also the backup from the work on the Pepco work, you know about the Pepco work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that already sometimes backs up.
That's right. Yeah, it's not been so bad lately, but yeah.
I just wanted to follow up, too. So that's separate, of course, from the WSSC work that will be done on Philadelphia Avenue portion of
Yes, that's very different.
East West Highway. So there, that's also scheduled to start in spring, but they --
We just keep trying to find out the details and work with them as
Because I still haven't really heard how that's going to be coordinated with Pepco on their other piece on Eastern and Tacoma Avenues, too, so if you hear anything about that, please let me know.
We will pass that along if you hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Another item, the city newsletter editor really wants to put together some special information for the April issue of the city newsletter, particularly about -- for residents who have memories of the day when Martin Luther King was shot, on April 4th, 1968. And so, I know a couple paragraphs, photos, if you have it, about, you know, where you were, or what you remember, or those kinds of things, and folks in your neighborhoods that maybe, you know, have good memories or helpful information that you want to share. So we've tried to get the information out in some different ways. We've got some kind of larger print flyers that we've given out to seniors in a number of situations, but if you know somebody or you personally want to share, I know that April, the newsletter editor, very much liked to receive that. And she would like those in by March 15th, and that information to contact -- how to contact her is here in my city manager report. I also just want to have kudos to my staff. The last few weeks have really been hard, and we're doing budget at the same time, and I just think they've been great, and they've been stressed out, and I just want to say thank you.
Great, terrific. And then we'll have the legislative update via the deputy city manager.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just very quickly, there are three items I wanted to provide updates on. One is the bond bill for $250,000 for the library renovations. I wanted to note that our mayor is going to be in Annapolis on Saturday testifying before the House and the Senate, so thank you on behalf of the city mayor for spending a Saturday doing that.
Annapolis.
The other item is we submitted testimony in support of House Bill 400, which requires 24-hour notice of pesticide spraying for mosquitoes. That notice is to be given by the agency doing the spraying to the municipality in which the spraying is being done. And finally, I just wanted to note, and this is on your agenda for next week, that the council will be considering a resolution condemning acts of gun violence and supporting the March for Our Lives, which is going to be held on March 24th, and other efforts to reduce gun violence. While it won't specifically provide testimony regarding any bill right now, it will provide a place that we can turn to in the future where the council has officially taken action. So if there are bills that we want to provide testimony on, this will provide -- set the precedence for doing so. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. All right, now we'll move to our voting session. The first voting item we have is a resolution adapting the council priorities. I think before I'm going to ask somebody to move it, I know there were a couple of things that we wanted to change in this. I'll make one note on the cover sheet, an issue that Councilmember Kovar raised, where it talks about the February 28th meeting, and we engaged in the exercise where we indicated priorities to be focused on and emphasized. It was for the upcoming budget in FY 19, because we did note for the fiscal year there were a number of ongoing projects or large projects, but the council was specifically looking at giving direction to the city manager as she does the budget.
Can I say a word?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just want to mention, thank you for that clarification, Mayor. The reason it's important is because the priorities within the priority document that we specified last week would be relevant for the budget doesn't mean that we can't work on the other priorities over the course of the year. And I think it's just -- and there can be confusion between fiscal year and budget for the fiscal year. So just to be clear, anything on the priorities document that we adopt tonight, we can work on. I hope we'll work on many of them over the course of the year. The things we highlighted specifically last week were for the budget, and others may also be put in the budget, too, but I just want to make it clear we're not limiting ourselves in that way. So thank you.
Thank you. And then there were a couple of things, and I'm going to ask the deputy city manager, because the copy I have actually doesn't have the smaller items that we had discussed, I realize, when I sat down.
Which one was it?
I think there were two or three small wording changes.
If you're referring to the edits that I had suggested making, they were very minor in nature. One was the -- in several places, there's a reference to the resident survey, and in one place, it was referred to as the community survey, so I changed that to resident survey, consistent with the rest of the document. And the other change that I made was adding Avenue after New Hampshire.
Okay. Oh, and I thought there was one on the sustainable investment. That was the one I was actually looking for.
Are -- do you mean the ones that came from the discussion on Monday evening?
No, I thought -- never mind then, I guess it's not important. I have recollection.
Well, if I may, on page three of the chart, I think maybe the goal wasn't changed, but maybe the desired outcome represents what was talked about.
I thought we had mentioned something about mentioning CDFIs. Am I making
I don't remember that.
All right.
I didn't -- I mean, we certainly talked about that, but not necessarily the scope of the priority.
They're really changing this, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, I see it's changed. It says with values of social responsibility versus sustainability values.
That's right. That's how we --
Okay, yes.
That's what we did change.
Thank you, sorry.
And that was made up of the council's suggestion, not one that I had come up with.
Right, okay. Thank you, sorry about that. All right, and I think Councilwoman Dubala, did you have something you wanted to put forward for council consideration?
Yes, thank you. So as we said on Monday night when we met with the Green Team, that we might make a couple of -- propose a -- and consider a couple of tweaks to this based on what we heard. And the first one is actually in the resolution itself. I don't know if you want to add to the dates that we considered priorities, the -- one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth whereas, no, the fifth, the fourth whereas. We discussed priorities on February 27th and 28th, and then do you want to end at the Green Team meeting on March 5th?
All right, are there's okay with that, adding that to the resolution? Okay.
That's good, fine.
Okay, all right, and then on the environmental priorities, sustainability priority section, I think we have general agreement to tweak the first goal, which currently, in essence, repeats the title of the page, to make it a little more specific to what this council and city would be doing. So to insert, instead of just continuing to be a leader, insert in community programs and policies for energy and environmental sustainability. So between community and sustainability on the first goal on page four, and I have it written down, I can hand it to somebody when we're done, to insert community programs and policies for energy and environmental sustainability.
Okay, everyone okay with that?
Everybody know?
Yep, all right. That's good.
All right. There were two other issues that came up at the Green Team meeting, and I have a proposed suggestion on one of them, and I think that the mayor may have a slightly different set of words on that. And that concerns the question of environmental impacts during construction, which we talked about as a separate but related item to development in general. So right now, again on page four, third strategy talks about housing and economic development and sustainable development approaches that we might identify and adopt. The question, the proposal, is to add a couple of words to ensure sustainable development and reduce environmental impacts during construction projects. That's one way of getting at it, assuming you want to change it at all, and the other way of getting at it is to add a fourth strategy in this goal that talks separately about working with the Committee on Environment to identify potential ways to reduce impacts during construction.
Like the first idea.
Okay, first idea? No idea, first idea, second idea?
Maybe the first one, yeah?
The first one is what's written here on the third strategy.
I don't read it all.
Adopt strategies to promote and ensure sustainable development Adopt strategies to promote and ensure sustainable development and its impacts, or, and, or environmental impacts of construction. So just roll it right into that, that one.
It's cleaner, I think.
My only concern, and why I suggested earlier to Councilwoman Dibala that maybe adding a different one, because that, that bullet is on, consider the draft strategic plan, and I just, I don't know, I was thinking that if we wanted one that talks specifically about actual construction projects that were happening, that seemed a bit different to me than the strategy here about what we're going to do in this upcoming year or so about, regarding the plan, and related to housing and economic development and promoting those strategies. Like, those are strategies for economic development and sustainable development, whereas, I believe, when we're talking to the Green, the Committee on the Environment, what they were talking about was really figuring out ways to reduce environmental impacts of construction projects that we have that are, like shovel-ready and we're going on them. And so, for me, there was two different things, and that's why I proposed that. And I like the idea of working, as we mentioned on Monday night, working with the Committee on the Environment to identify what are potential areas, because I think we should recognize that there are a lot of guidelines that are already out there that, under construction projects, have to be followed.
Right, so what we already have.
And so, what this goal was talking about, that was brought to us by the Committee on the Environment, was seeing if there were potential ways of going above and beyond that and identifying that. So, that's all.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and so I would change my vote to go with the longer version.
I have one clarification.
I'm indifferent.
So, when we say, to me, I think it might be better to have it in a separate one as well, but when we say reduce environmental impacts, are we saying reduce them from what they currently would be? Are we saying minimize them? Because as you just, you said there already are requirements.
Minimize.
Right, so are we?
Minimize might be a better word.
Minimize or manage?
Let's, let's not do manage, because I think that ends up changing, and it puts us into a responsible, a responsibility that I don't want to take on.
Right, okay.
So, so perhaps an additional strategy is work with the Committee on the Environment to minimize environmental impacts during construction?
Well, to identify ways to do it.
To identify, okay.
Potential ways to do it.
Yeah, I like to identify potential ways, because again, they're in certain, given certain constraints, we may not be able, we may have some great ideas, but we may not be able to actually implement them, so.
I've got lots of ideas on the topic.
No, does that work? All right, seen a lot?
Does that work for everybody? I can go either way.
So, just to make sure that I've got the wording down correctly, it's adding a strategy in the continue to be a leader, under the, to continue to be the leader goal, that says work with the Committee on the Environment to identify potential ways to minimize negative environmental impacts during construction?
I don't think you need the negative.
You don't need the negative, just environmental impacts during construction projects.
Construction projects, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's one, two. And then the, last but not least, there was a lot of discussion about water quality. And we could do one of two things. We could, again, put, put in a strategy that talks about developing, developing approaches to, to water quality in conjunction with the committee, or we, what I, what I prefer is, I don't think it's ready for primetime yet. And I want to hear from the committee what it is they want to do besides, gee, we want to look at water quality. So, I very much want to work with them to figure out what we're going to do, but I don't think we know what it is yet in a very basic way. But I could, Terry, what do you, what do you think? Do you want to call it out because you?
I think it should be called out, but I, I think it'd be, you know, the base level research is, is what I heard that they're doing at this point, and that we should at least get it in there as a, as a marker for getting started on that important issue. And I say that coming off of working 20 years on the Safe Drinking Water Act, where water quality was of utmost importance.
Yeah, and I, I feel, we also talked about stormwater management, but that's already in, under, right, under major projects and initiatives. Assuming the water quality area remains a Green Team priority, it's indirectly in here under major projects. We could maybe call it out specifically there. Highlight, you know, saying especially water quality, or highlighting water quality or something, would be another way of, of handling it. Or adding, as I said, adding another, another strategy specific to water quality. It doesn't really fit in any of the three that we've got now.
And I would just also, just remind us all that when the Green Team comes back to us with their priorities, we'll pass a resolution affirming the Green Team's priorities, and can always come back to this document once we have their strategy on water quality, kind of, I was going to say flushed out, but that's.
Well, maybe that, maybe that's the way to do it, to say continue working on achieving all Green Team, Green Team, no, I can't talk straight. Green Team priorities, focusing on or especially water quality issues. Would that work for you?
Okay, so we'll call it out under the major projects?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the second bullet.
I guess I have just a little bit of a problem with that. Just, you say continue work toward achievement of all Green Team priorities is there, which was a lot of things, and, and a lot of it's been reflective. So, I could see including, but not, including water quality, but not especially water quality, because it wasn't on the highest ranked tier.
Yeah, wait for it to get, stay tuned, for it to get bumped up. Okay.
Okay, so including water quality.
All right. So that's, two, three, three changes to the, to this section.
Did you have other changes to other sections?
Nope.
All right. Anyone else have other suggestions for other sections of the priorities? All right, seeing none, would someone like to move the resolution on our priorities?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, move it. Do I have a number two, a second? Councilwoman Searcy, second it. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Resolution passed. Next, we have our resolution regarding school facilities. This one, there's a lot of suggested changes on this one. And just as a note, generally, we would have a work session on something like this and then have the vote, but given the timing of when public comments need to be in on the site selection report, we're kind of, we're fast-tracking this one.
We did have some discussion beforehand, but the, there is a special, the copy with the red line changes, not in red, but with the changes, is in your package there. And I appreciate that there were a number of different good suggestions. I tried to incorporate all of them in here today. And so, the changes that are here are the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas would now read, whereas MCPs's criteria for site selection undervalued important factors such as walkability, operational costs of busing, and impact on sustainability efforts, as well as the impact on a large number of non-white students, with 73% of the students at Tacoma Park Elementary, Piney Branch Elementary, and Rolling Terrace should be elementary being students of color. And then in, to, whereas it's down from that, the new language would be, whereas Montgomery County could deny approval of proposed developments if a location does not have adequate public facilities, including schools' capacity, thereby limiting the redevelopment of the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor, which is a transit-oriented area, and the redevelopment of which is a longstanding goal of the city and county, established with the council adoption of the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor concept plan in 2008, and the Montgomery County-Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Sector Plan. Then we made changes to the be it further resolved clauses. I'll just go ahead and read the first, the result, first resolved and then the rest. So now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, that the city of Tacoma Park requests that Montgomery County Public Schools locate a new school in or near Tacoma Park to accommodate the growing population of school-aged children, and be it further resolved that MCPs and Montgomery County continue to allocate the funds required for the expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School, which is necessary to partially accommodate the growing population of school-aged children. And this is one that I don't know that there's consensus on, so I'm just, it was a suggestion, so I just wanted to highlight that. And be it further resolved that in addition to other nearby sites, MPS, MCPs study the feasibility of using the Washington and Venice Hospital campus, which meets the criteria for school site selection for the location of a new school. The city has recently learned new information regarding the timing and availability of the hospital campus, which will be vacated in 2019. And be it further resolved that the city of Tacoma Park requests that MCPs and Montgomery County develop a process for citing new schools when no available site is identified in a master plan, as well as develop criteria to guide the use of parkland and open space for schools, determining when and under what considerations the use of parkland is acceptable for a school site, and specifying the replacement requirements. Privately-owned land should be given serious consideration, especially in dense down-county locations, with both the short-term costs of land purchase and the long-term costs of busing students weighed into decisions. Walkability, sustainability, and the development of strong community schools should be important factors in decision-making about school sites.
Great, thank you. Any questions or additional changes anyone wants to recommend? No? All right.
Is in the, the last, be it resolved, the last sentence, pulling up the rear, walkability, sustainability, racial equity, and strong community schools? It's a question, since we refer to it at fair length in one of the whereas's, just occurred to me.
Yeah, I think that's, makes sense.
So, walkability, sustainability, racial equity, and the development, is that right? Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts on the second page of this document, the second resolve clause, the new one that's been added regarding Piney Branch. I sort of feel like we should say, and be it further resolved that MCPs and Montgomery County should continue to allocate the funds required, that's just to make that statement a little bit clearer. But then to flip back to the previous page in the fifth whereas clause, where Piney Branch, again, is mentioned, my concern there had been, and still is, that as it currently reads, even though we later on say, under the, under the one I was just talking about, there's a lot of clauses I was just talking about that we want to go forward with, you could easily read this as meaning since it's too small, we don't favor going forward with it. So I thought it might be preferable there just to say, and this is the fifth whereas clause, whereas we support moving forward with the proposed expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School, and then something like this, but we recognize that because it's on the smallest MCPs school parcel, it will not be sufficient on its own to address the need for elementary school space in Tacoma, in the Tacoma Park area. So that way, we make it clear we do favor it, but that the size is the reason why it's not going to be sufficient. And then that connects well with the.
You know, it may just be easier to, in the whereas clause, say, whereas the proposed expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School on the smallest MCPs school parcel will not be sufficient to fully address the need. I mean, because I, I think having this whereas clause, I don't think you need to repeat the entire reason for it and the be it resolved.
Okay.
But I also think it's important to clarify the whereas clause so that it, so it doesn't look like we're discounting Piney Branch.
Mm-hmm. I guess the question is, well, all right, I mean, whether that gives the impression that we don't support it, I guess is the question. Since it won't be fully sufficient, are we for it or against it? But you're saying because we say in the end in the resolve clause.
I'm open to other statements.
Necessary for proposed expansion?
I could go either way, as long as the resolve clause is, is strong at the end, so.
And you think adding the should makes it stronger?
Well, the should is more, just, just for grammar, I think, because it says resolve that they're doing this.
Yeah, should, continue, okay. Any other?
So, I mean, so, so to go back to what Councilmember Kovar just said, so maybe in the whereas clause, it should say, whereas the proposed expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School, while needed, or some, you know, on the smallest school parcel, while needed, will not be sufficient to full. I mean, do you want that?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, my thing went.
That's good.
All right, any other suggestions or changes? Give people a moment to look over things.
I think there's a typo in the address for the, one of the schools, because it's a little long of a number.
Okay.
It's not that far out, on the 100,000 block.
I see that, I see that now, in the McDonald, yeah.
I think there's an extra zero there.
Councilmember Searcy?
So, one point that was raised in the superintendent's response is that the East Silver Spring Elementary School should help to alleviate some of the overutilization at.
At Rolling Terrace.
At Rolling Terrace. So, I'm kind of torn on to what extent do we want to acknowledge that that also may not be sufficient? Or is it just enough for us to acknowledge that the expansion of Piney Branch will still leave us at a deficit? You know, do we want to just say, you know, expansion and creation of new sites will not fully satisfy the future needs of the city of Tacoma Park? So I could kind of go either way on it, but I do wonder if it makes sense to acknowledge the points that were raised by the superintendent, that in some ways try to kind of allude to the fact that they're working to address some of the overcrowding that we're experiencing in a roundabout way. So I don't know to what extent we want to acknowledge both the expansion of Piney Branch, as well as the East Silver Spring Elementary School, or if we just want to stick with Piney Branch.
I, I think it's up to you. I mean, it certainly is part of the discussion. I am absolutely convinced that the expansions that are in the, in the queue will no way accommodate the students that would be coming from Tacoma Park. And I think just the statistics that we pulled up will support that. So some, if you want to put another whereas clause or something, or add into one of these, it seems fine.
We have a lot of whereas's, so trying to figure out some way.
I mean, I guess, I'm kind of torn. On the one hand, I like sticking with Piney Branch, because it's, like, we're sticking with the city and this, and Rolling Terrace is always considered part of us anyway. And I, you know, branching out too far, I also, I want them to take us seriously that we are looking out for our schools and our community and not trying to kind of go too far. That's one of my concerns, but again, I'm torn. So, Councilmember Smith?
I would like us to put a whereas clause to say something about Rolling Terrace. There are a lot of residents in Ward Five who send their kids to Rolling Terrace. And if, if this new proposal from the superintendent is not going to be adequate, I think we should, you know, say something about that case.
So, I guess the question that I have on this is, I mean, Rolling Terrace has 900-some students in a, in a school that's for like 650. It's really overcrowded. I think, you know, maybe to get to both of the points just raised, maybe there's a, a place in here where, when we talk about the three schools in, you know, in or near Tacoma Park, we just indicate something that, where Tacoma Park residents attend. I mean, you know, so that, that can kind of reinforce why we're really looking at these three schools and concerned about them. Obviously, if you start having to bus some kids away from those three schools, you're busing away some Tacoma Park resident kids.
So that's fine if we do something that indicates that residents in the city go to these schools, even though they are not actually within the boundaries of Tacoma Park.
So, I think it probably makes sense. So, I think it probably makes sense, there's somewhere like in the, around in the third or fourth whereas, and a new whereas clause being inserted, that these three schools serve many Tacoma Park residents.
And three schools being Rolling Terrace, East Silver Spring?
No, 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 no. Tacoma Park Elementary, Piney Branch Elementary, and Rolling Terrace Elementary are the ones that serve, primarily serve Tacoma Park, I mean, Tacoma Park students primarily go to those three schools.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a shorthand way of dealing, of adding what Talisha was referring to, on the whereas, one, two, three, five, I think it is, proposed expansion of Piney Branch School on the smallest parcel, and other area schools expand, so it adds the East Silver Spring in there, rather than a separate clause, but I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Which whereas, whereas clause are you in?
I'm in the proposed expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School, adding in the other area schools there.
I'm not sure, we either need to call out the school or not, because I don't want them to think that we're not saying that Tacoma Park Middle School's expansion won't be sufficient, because I actually think that one might be fine. So either I think we call out East Silver Spring, or, yeah, because if we just say others, there are others that they're doing the expansion for, that their projections may be fine.
All right.
So...
Never mind.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Yeah, just related to that, my recommendation would be to change that clause to, whereas the proposed expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School on the smallest MCPS school parcel and East Silver Spring Elementary School will not be sufficient to fully address the need for elementary school space in Tacoma Park.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, just adding East Silver Spring there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And if I can just make one other comment, that's not necessarily about this, but in, I did have a conversation with Mike Riley, who's head of parks for Park and Planning, and it was about the rec center, but it got onto the subject of schools and how MCPS was trying to take over his parks, and, you know, we really need the parks. And I said, well, we were trying to advocate for more of a master plan approach, when the demographics show that there's more students, you know, have a very good process of identifying school sites, if a master plan site wasn't available. Yes! He got very excited. We've been trying to, he and Casey Anderson, we're planning on having a meeting with the superintendent to push forward that concept completely. So I think that it's, this is really consistent with the interests of other people also, who see this as a real need. So I thought that was a wonderful area of support.
All right. So with the changes we've discussed, does someone want to move the resolution?
No.
Councilmember Smith, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick? Any discussion, other questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Next, we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a stormwater study, and we'll welcome Ms. Braithwaite.
That was passed out, and it's item number three. I put it, you should have it there. I added it to your pile.
At the Green Team meeting on Monday, the city issued a request for proposals for stormwater rate study and evaluation. The city has not had our stormwater rate evaluated since it was created originally. So, technology and data has advanced much since that time. So, we received three proposals. We're recommending that the city pursue the proposal offered by Black &amp; Beach. It was not the lowest cost proposal, but we thought it most met the needs of the city, both in the process and the procedure they were planning to use to evaluate the existing impervious area and single family homes. Their proposal was very specific in regards to not only using the available technology of GIS mapping and aerial information and LiDAR, but also to field test a minimum of two hundred residential properties to measure the impervious area, and then also sixty hours, I believe, on commercial properties. So they'll be, they were very detailed in the level of information that they'll be gathering to try to assess and determine whether our existing assumptions about the average impervious area on single family properties is still accurate, and then also to give a confirmation of whether that as a base rate still makes sense for our billing structure. In addition to that, what they call is phase one or option one, they also did offer some additional components. We don't have the funding available for those in this current fiscal year, so what we're asking for is to just proceed with phase one, which is the impervious area study. But they did also offer pricing for developing proposals related to a credit program, where we would take a look at how we might develop a program to allow properties to request credit for work that they're doing on their own properties related to removing impervious area, or providing stormwater treatment. And then also to take a look at whether or not we have enough differentiation within our residential property base to make sense for a step level of rate structure, so that there wouldn't be just one single family rate structure. So those are options that can be pursued, and the price of those options is within that total phase two broader study concept that they had available, which we could decide to do at a later date.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Braithwaite. Can you remind us how long it's going to take for this study to be completed?
I think it's just a matter of, like, twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks. And the pricing for the broader study, how long is that going to be in effect?
I don't recall that they offered dates with that. They had a number of different potential projects that they could work on, the two that I mentioned above. They also had some financial analysis and expenditure and revenue analysis, financial planning efforts. We feel like we've really got that in hand, so we didn't necessarily feel like we needed to do that, but they didn't really offer dates on those, because they knew we were really focused on the impervious area rate structure. We could get that information, but I imagine it would, it would be more, the data gathering would be done, so it would really be more a policy and process discussion.
Right.
So what's proposed here is to authorize me to sign contracts without having to come back to you with another ordinance, but the first part would be then done for this fiscal year, and we would identify which components that are, that we would want to pursue, that we can then have the pricing for FY nineteen, and obviously, there'd be back and forth with the council about what those components would be. It would not be up to the full total amount, but it's, it's an opportunity for us to be able to pick and choose what we best need after we get the data.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, hi. Couple things. I'm really happy to see this. I think it's, the work is needed. What was, was there an original budget or estimate in mind that was built into this year's budget for this, and if so, what was it?
I think we assumed thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was remembering. So then, my second question is, Black &amp; Beach is a great firm. Do you feel that they're giving you more product, or they're spending more hours, or is their rate just higher?
I think they were going down into the weeds a little bit more.
Okay, so they're giving more detail.
Yeah.
Okay. In the write-up, it talks about digitizing residential parcels. I'm not familiar with exactly what that is.
It's basically just creating a layer that could be used in GIS.
Okay, so creating GIS layer, not just using the stuff that's already, all right. Well, if that's the difference, it's probably worth it right there, in my view. And on the broader components, I agree, I don't think we're there yet, so there's no point in thinking about it right now.
Black &amp; Beach, as you mentioned, is really a firm that's known nationwide for this work, and they've done work all over the country. Not to say that other companies aren't currently, are equally capable, but they really are the premier stormwater engineering firm that's, they do a nationwide report on stormwater rate structures, and they really do track these things over time. So we feel like we'll have access to information through them that, you know, will be helpful for us as we look to the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Oh, you guys all, okay. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One is, I like the idea of exploring the credit program and the rate structure, the rate, rate structure, the different fees that you discussed. I think that would be great to look at. The other one is that it looks like in the ordinance in section one, there is a typo in the amount, the written out words say thirty-six thousand, the numerals say thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Let's just say thirty-six.
It's thirty-six, yeah.
Be thirty-six. Six thirty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a rough week. I have to just...
All right. Terrific. I just want to add, like my colleagues did, that we're, I'm very excited to see this starting, and I'm also excited to hear about the add-on studies that this firm is able to do. This is a single reading ordinance, so I'll ask, who would like to move this? Councilwoman Kostick moved, do I have a second? Councilmember Smith, any other questions? Single reading ordinance, I'll ask the city clerk to take the role.
Councilmember Kostick?
Hi.
Councilmember Searsi?
Hi.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right. Our last voting item tonight is a single reading ordinance awarding a renewable energy supplier contract for the switch to one hundred percent renewable campaign, and we'll welcome our sustainability manager, Gina Mathias.
And again, there's a replacement, the salmon colored thing that was passed out, slightly modified information.
Yeah, the salmon colored one has information about the company that we are recommending for the contract. A little bit about the contract, we want to work with a renewable energy supplier to make it easier for any Pepco customer in Tacoma Park to switch to one hundred percent renewable energy. People can already do this, but there are dozens of companies that offer that service with variable contract terms, variable prices, and consumers are left trying to sort through all of the options and choices. It's a little daunting, and we want to make it very easy. So, we issued the RFP to select a contractor. We were open to having more than one, if we had responses that were attractive, to work with them on contract terms and prices that are competitive, and we'll make it easy when we do a large public outreach campaign for people to say, yes, I want that, I know exactly what I'm getting. We received three responses. Only one company adequately responded to the criteria in the RFP. But it wasn't just adequate, they really knocked it out of the park. Clean Choice Energy, who we are recommending, is an outstanding company. I'm really pleased with their response. Not only are they offering a one hundred percent renewable energy product at a twenty-one percent discount on the market rate for our project, they also are a certified B corporation. They have a number of employees that actually live in Tacoma Park. They're headquartered in Washington, DC, so they're a relatively local campaign, company, and they already have five thousand Pepco customers, a hundred thousand in the region. So they're very well situated to work with us and to provide great service.
Okay. Thank you. I noticed on our, the racial equity impact of this action, we talk about, first, people who don't have English as their first language, how this is a very complicated system. In the campaign that will be the outreach, will be, will we be doing it in multiple languages?
Yes, absolutely. We will also have a scholarship or a discount fund for low income qualified Pepco account holders that the company will set up.
Terrific. Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks, yeah, just two questions. So on the scholarship or grant, whatever the term is, is there, would there be a limit to how many people could get that, or is whoever meets whatever the requirements are will be eligible for that?
Yeah, we haven't set that criteria with the company yet. I think that based upon if we hit certain numbers, typically, energy companies will give referral fees. And since we're not asking them to give the city a referral fee for signing up, say, a thousand customers, I'm hoping they'll put the referral fee for each one of those customers into the fund. So if we signed up a thousand new customers for them, that could be anywhere from twenty-five dollars each to fifty dollars each.
On average, would the typical resident who did this, what would be the change that they would see? Is it possible to...
Sure. It would be about ten dollars a month, so about a hundred and twenty dollars a year increase in their rate, and that's with the discount. If we went without the discount, if people just go to the market, like I do now, to buy one hundred percent wind, it's more of a fifteen to twenty dollar increase.
So then a person potentially eligible for the grant or assistance could get something like a hundred and twenty dollars a year?
Exactly, yes.
And so then the last question, just following up on what the mayor said, there will be an organized outreach program to make sure people understand this, because a lot of these things come to all of our mailboxes and so on, and I think it becomes very difficult to know, should we sign up, et cetera? So how, will there be more than just letters coming to people?
I might even hire a marching band to parade up and down the streets this time. My goal is that there will not be a single person in the city who can look me in the eye and say they didn't know about this. So, we plan to work with the company to have canvassers go door to door, we'll be tabling at all of the major events, do some public workshops. It'll be a massive outreach effort.
Okay. Thanks.
Let's, sorry. Councilmember Smith?
Hi. Residents that get their energy through a third party like Studebaker, can they sign up for Clear Choice, or...
Absolutely. So Studebaker could work with Clean Choice Energy. Clean Choice Energy has stated in their response that they will work with multifamily buildings, small businesses, and commercial accounts. They didn't give me a rate for the multifamily buildings, because it'll depend on the size of the building.
And the twenty-one percent discount, is that for the life of the contract that we have with them, or...
It'll continue. So they said after one year, the contract is for one year with each customer when they sign up, when they renew, the rates may go up based on what the market is doing, but the Tacoma Parker Group will still receive a twenty-one percent discount. So they'll still get a discount rate, even if it has to go up a little bit.
And finally, those residents that need assistance paying their Pepco bills, will they still be eligible if they use this firm?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Searsi?
Hi. Thanks so much for doing this. This is, this sounds great. One question I have relates to transparency, and so I know that we're really promoting clean choice energy, but they may not be the only camp in town. To what extent are we making, as part of the rollout, it clear to residents, not only that we're kind of promoting clean choice, but what potential other options might be? I mean, as was already communicated, we get flooded with information about alternatives, and part of the challenge is having to sift through all of these different companies and understanding what's best. And I, I think it's great that we're trying to make it easier by making a selection, but maybe not everyone is one hundred percent trusting that this will be the best deal for them. So to what extent are we including, like, some price comparison information and making some of the analysis that was done publicly available, so that people understand, not only the city is endorsing this, you get a discount, but we've compared these rates with other rates of some other providers, and we really think this is the best choice for you.
I think that's a really great point, that we need to be sure that we will provide that information. We will have a dedicated website page for the opt-in program, and since it's all voluntary opt-in, we will be upfront and clear about, this is voluntary, residents and business owners can choose this, they can choose to go with another supplier. And luckily, there's already a great website available through the Public Service Commission... And luckily, there's already a great website available through the Public Service Commission that lists all of the available suppliers and their current pricing. So we can link to that and also have that printed, although it changes from time to time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, this, um, this is, this is great. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So if this is not just for single-family homeowners?
It's for every Pepco account holder in the city.
Including if it's a group account, because it's a multifamily building, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right, would someone like to move this ordinance?
I would.
Whoa, all right. You guys woke up. Councilmember Siemens moves. Councilwoman Dibala, second. Any other questions or discussion? This is also a single reading ordinance, so I'll ask the clerk to take the role.
Councilmember Kostick, Councilmember Searsy, Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Ms. Mathias and Ms. Braithwaite for coming tonight. And we got, we got you two times this week, so thank you very much. All right, next we have our Neighborhood Services Team. And, you gotta wake up.
The whole team's not here, just me.
All right.
We're with you. Oh, thank you.
I'm Rick Baravecchi, I'm the Neighborhood Services Team Manager for the city. If I can run this slide thing, I'll be doing good. The concept for the NST started when the Code Enforcement Division was moved from HCD, that's Housing Community Development, down to the Police Department. This event occurred in August of 2016. And that was done with the hopes of enhancing the effectiveness of the Code Enforcement Division. The NST was form, was formally created when a manager, me, was assigned and Code Enforcement was combined with Parking Enforcement. This event occurred in March of 2017. The NST is responsible for parking enforcement and all aspects of Code Enforcement, including the environmental initiatives. And just some, I, I thought I'd put some statistics out there for calendar year 2017. We had 325 property maintenance cases. We have 29 open cases. 68 monthly vacant property inspections are, we, we take care of every month. And that number goes up and down. I think the, the last time I, I heard, it was, it actually dropped to 62. But to get, you know, in a couple of months, it could be back up again, who knows. 60, we do 61 monthly litter inspections. Those are primarily commercial occupancies and multifamilies. And we had 12 environmental cases. We, we removed 2,496 signs and flyers. The Parking Enforcement Division did 3,713 parking tickets, 276 warning tickets. Most of those would be 72-hour warnings. We impounded 32 vehicles and we repaired 92 meters. And the environmental initiatives, we've visited every commercial business in the city to promote the city environmental initiatives. That's the plastic bag ban, the polystyrene ban for the commercial businesses. And we designed a reusable shopping bag to promote our anti-litter campaign. And I have a, there's the bag. For any of you who haven't seen it, you've probably seen him around town. We gave out over, oh, we gave out over a thousand of those so far. We designed a water bottle to promote the anti-litter campaign. That's the TKPK logo on the water bottle. We've given out over 300 of these. And I, I got this idea because I, I happened to be down on Sligo Creek one day, and there's a, a portion of Sligo Creek that sort of creates a, for, for want of a better term, a trash collection area. And I noticed there were about maybe 300 of those little plastic water bottles down there. And I thought maybe if we get a reusable bottle, people wouldn't keep using the, the little plastic bottles. We designed a new magnet to promote our anti-litter campaign and distributed over 300 of them. And the new magnet is the, the one with the state seal on it. Some people felt that the cleaning, the, the groovy one, you know, with the tie-dye and all that was starting to get a little stale, so came up with a new one. And of course, we're in the state of Maryland, so I thought I'd use a state flag. I'm a big state flag fan, by the way.
There you go. And outside of the finance window yesterday, I heard somebody specifically asking for that magnet.
Yeah, it's in demand. It's going faster than the other one.
Did you sign it?
No, I didn't sign it. And I didn't copyright it either, I probably should have. And we designed a bee, a bee seed packet to promote the Safe Grow Zone and distributed over a thousand of those. And these are these little seed packets that were really popular. They have our Safe Grow Zone logo on there and they, they're meant to attract bees, this particular type of seed. So trying to help out the pollinators and grow some, promote safe growth at the same time. And we hosted a suburban deer management presentation. That was just in this past fall. That was at the request of the city manager. Unfortunately, we've had some deer situations in the city, deers getting stuck in fences and trapped in people's yards and things like that. So we're getting a lot of calls about them. So we had a guy from the state come down. He's, he's a, I think a deer biologist or something like that, that was his title. He gave a presentation about some things people can do to sort of deer-proof their yard and to make it less attractive for deer to come into the yard and get in, into a difficult situation. And we have two events scheduled so far for the, the spring. I've, I've, I have scheduled a organic lawn care presentation and there's going to be an anti-litter presentation also. And I'm hoping to get, I think I'm going to do another presentation slanted towards organic gardening. So I'm hoping to get that lined up too. And that's pretty much it for my presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to just note that it's been wonderful having the Neighborhood Services Team and especially Rick as the, as a team leader, in, in being very responsive to some really intractable problems and being able to address them. And so, you know, we're still learning, we're still getting fully staffed and, and making sure that, that we can handle everything. But I've been really thrilled with the outreach that he's done so far.
And that's the he's done. Councilmember Smith?
Rick, I'm glad to see you're up here tonight.
Thank you.
It's great to hear that you're still doing something with the anti-litter initiative. I put that forward a number of years ago. It's, it's good to see that it's still around. How do you compare the, the numbers that you listed of all of the different categories? How do you compare that to what happened in 2016? Do you have those numbers?
I haven't done a comparison.
Okay, all right. I have a couple buildings, at least one building, that I get a lot of complaints about. When you have buildings that, I guess you should check them out every month, every week, every two weeks, what's the process for those buildings? Do you go to, to the landlord, to the management company? Because I seem to get emails from particular residents that say that this building continues to do whatever, you know, litter on the premises, people throwing stuff out of their actual windows of their apartment buildings, the grounds of the, the property. How do you handle those situations? Because it's not like a, a one-time thing, right? You know?
Those buildings would be on our monthly program.
Okay.
We go to them once a month. If we start having a lot of issues, we'll go more often than once a month. A lot of times, our first point of contact's going to be the management company, not the land, not the property owner.
Right.
Because they hire people to manage their properties. And a lot of times, when we go straight to the management company, you know, we have a relationship with them. It can just be a phone call. We'll call them and say, here, here's what's going on, can you handle it? And they usually handle it pretty quickly. Sometimes we'll get to a point where we have to issue NOVs. But most of the management companies, they know who we are, they're pretty responsive. We've had, we've had success just dealing straight with them.
Okay. So do you have any, any advice?
You can pass those, any, any concerns that citizens send to you, you're more than welcome to send them straight to me and I'll follow up on them.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
And once again, it's great to have you here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, it's great to have you here. It's great to hear the results after here, meeting you when you first started. Just on the statistics, open cases means open property maintenance cases?
Yes.
That you're still looking into?
Yes.
Process, figuring out how to work with them?
Yes.
Okay. That, that was my only question, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, thanks for the information. Just a few questions. One of the things that was brought to my attention recently by a resident who was given a, an advisory note to correct a problem, and then the timing was such that while they were working on that, the next notice came, and while they were working on that, within the amount of time it just took to basically receive the note and look into it and try to work on it, and there was no indication on the initial note, what the timing would be before it got into the violation phase, which, you know, when you get a, a parking ticket from the city or from DC or wherever, it says, you know, you have to pay within this amount of time or it'll double. And so the resident in question mentioned that she had spoken to your staff, whoever they were, and they said, oh yeah, that'd be a great idea to add those to the notices. Is that something that you've heard of before? Could we have that added so when someone receives that, they see how much time they have to correct it?
If they receive a courtesy notice, we don't have any timeframe on that. The courtesy notice is, is given to people primarily to initiate a phone call. That's, that was the idea. They, when I first came, came on, you know, I looked at the process and the process said courtesy notice, then notice of violation, and then citation.
Right.
You know? But they weren't doing courtesy notices.
Right.
So I said, why, why aren't you all doing the courtesy notices? They, they said, well, the courtesy notices that we have, people don't respond to them. We always end up having to send NOVs, so we've just gone straight to NOVs. So I, I was fortunate enough to, to meet one of the Ward 6 residents who happens to have a background in advertising, and he helped me to, to design a new door hanger, courtesy notice. And we started using that as a test program, and it's, it's turned out great.
Well, so in this case, they got the courtesy notice, they called within the first few days, and while conversations were going back and forth on getting advice on how to fix it, then they received a violation.
They received a notice of violation?
Right.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem to really make sense to me.
We might have, we, we might have gotten a little overzealous on that one.
But so...
Or it could have been some miscommunication between the, the citizen and, and the inspector.
But with a courtesy notice, there is or isn't a timeframe by which it then becomes a violation. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We usually...
Rick, why don't you walk through, sorry, why don't you walk through the process and the timeframe?
Okay.
For everyone.
Okay. The process, and this is... The courtesy notice is the first part of the process. And, and the courtesy notice can arrive on your front door. It might be that we received a phone call from somebody. It could be that we received a complaint on my TKPK. Sometimes I get complaints just via email. Or it could be just a random inspection that the, one of the inspectors, you know, drive-by type situation. We would leave a courtesy notice on the front door. It identifies the code violation observed and encourages the owner to contact the inspector. The inspector will usually return to the site within five to 10 business days to re-inspect. If the person calls us and says, hey, you know, I, I got the courtesy notice, but hey, I'm going out of town, you know, can you give me some more time? We, we always do. You know, we try to be as flexible as we can with people. If we don't receive a phone call and if there's no corrections made regarding the violations that have been described, then we send a notice of violation in the mail. The notice of violation lets them know, it's a little bit more serious, it's letting them know a, a specific deadline for the correction of the violation and when the property's going to be inspected, re-inspected. If the owner has made the required repairs, repairs, the case is closed. If the work to correct the violation is underway or the weather has prevented the owner from fully addressing the violation, the owner may request additional time to correct the outstanding violations. They can send us a form to request an extension. We grant them all the time.
So I guess the question is whether the courtesy notice should explain the process?
Give a, give a deadline?
Right.
It, there's, there's a possibility we could do that. Like I said, the courtesy notice, when I designed it, you know, I didn't want to make it too long or too brief, so I kind of arrived at this.
Well, we didn't have to resolve it tonight. That's just an issue that's brought to my attention, if you could think of...
There is a possibility. We could say, please do it within five to 10
Okay, yeah.
Business days, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, a couple other questions.
Okay.
One of the things that comes up is county code issues versus city code issues. And I think that city employees, yourself and your staff, are allowed to enforce county requirements. But I wonder if you could talk about how that works, because I've heard from people who have county questions, you know, zoning violations or housing conditions and things like that, which fall under the county, but the average person doesn't necessarily know that and they contact the city first. And so then, what happens? Would you guys go out there and check it out first? Issue a citation, contact the county? How does that relationship work?
If we recognize it as a county issue, we'll contact the county.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't go out there and do an inspection.
So, but if you see a county violation, can you issue a citation, or do you have to contact the county?
I'd rather count, contact the county, since it's, it's their responsibility. And I wouldn't want to get into a situation where one of our inspectors goes by on Wednesday and issues a, a notice of violation the next day, and then that day, a, a county inspector happens to go by and then decides to issue a notice of violation. You know, and then the person would get two, but notices of violation, one from the city, one from the county.
I can answer that a little bit too. We've had a practice of, of deferring to the county, contacting the county. That way it keeps with the county records and that kind of thing. The couple times when city staff has, has basically acted on a county code is when we really didn't see the county moving and it felt important enough. So that's, we've done that sometimes, but we try not to do that as a, as a regular practice.
So, and you mean, in some cases, if for whatever reason the viol, we alerted them to it, but they didn't come out and look at it themselves, the county, that might be something where we would...
Yeah, there's, there's a couple, I think there's a couple different kinds of things. Frankly, signs ends up being one.
Work permits?
I'm sorry?
Like work permits? We had an issue where we weren't sure about a permit and work was being done and so...
Right, sometimes we do stop work.
Right.
Sometimes we put out a stop work order, but...
But I would just say, the Neighborhood Services was very helpful and, because the county was a little slow on doing something.
Like I said, we try to let the county do its job and we do prefer that, but there are sometimes times when it's appropriate for us to step up.
Okay, just a couple more things, if you don't mind. So, we've talked a lot about what happens where residential and commercial sections of the community meet, and that's where, you know, you have garbage and light and noise and things like that. Do you find that there's been any change lately in those kinds of concerns? Are the tools that you have adequate to address those kinds of things? I'm thinking particularly about garbage at commercial sites, which is something a lot of the residents in my area have contacted me about.
Yeah, I think the tools that we have available work. When we get the complaints, we respond to them as quickly as we, as we can and we, we work towards a resolution. Most of the property managers for the shopping centers are, are very cooperative. When we contact the management companies, they, they seem to respond pretty quickly.
And so is the my TKPK the best way for people to do that, or just contacting you or any, any of those?
The, the advantage to my TKPK is that it, it creates a case record.
Okay.
And then if I have a question, I can respond directly to the person who's filing the complaint. And I don't have to go through another person and, you know, try to, when I have to go through another person to get information, it slows down the process.
So just in terms of prioritizing, I mean, you mentioned sometimes you're driving by and you see something. Sometimes you get called, sometimes it's on my TKPK. Some things are obviously very serious and others are, you know, some things droop in a little, might make it hard for people to pass by and et cetera. How do you kind of prioritize all of that?
Anything safety-related is going to come first. That's going to be the highest priority. And then the, the rest are going to be first come, first served.
So non-safety would be paint on a house or something like that?
Yeah, you know, my neighbor's shutters need paint. That wouldn't be a, a safety issue. A safety issue would be, hey, my neighbor's front porch is falling down, you know? Can you all do something about that?
The last question, so for sidewalk vegetation, what's the required height and... The last question, so for sidewalk vegetation, what's the required height and width and so on? Because that seems to be one that I hear about a lot.
Well, it's eight feet clearance, and no vegetation is allowed to intrude onto the sidewalk, the area that you're allowed to walk on. And what our goal was, people would say, well, I don't see anybody eight feet tall walking around the city. What happens is these branches that, let's say it's seven feet in the air, when it gets wet, they can droop down, and then people have to duck underneath of them.
Okay.
And, you know, as far as going out on the sidewalk, obviously, we don't want our citizens to have to walk into the grass area. Or let's say there's somebody who's coming by who's a handicap person. They can't go off the paved surface. If they do, they have a problem immediately.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Circe?
First, I just want to say thank you so much.
I think, yeah.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm like messing up tonight. It keeps popping to do...
I think it's the differed rotation with the names.
I know.
Just kind of throwing us all over the loop. But first, let me just say thank you so much for all that you do. I know in Ward 6 specifically, you've worked tirelessly to address some of the issues that we've had, so I just want to thank you and your team. And I just want to reiterate some of the context points. You currently have one parking enforcement officer, two code enforcement officers, and one manager.
Yes.
Okay. I just, you know, because that for me is extremely telling, given the size of the city and the amount and the stats that you've quoted. Given where you are in terms of staffing, what are you not able, that you would like to do more of, that you're not able to do because of the staffing resources that you currently have?
Well, right now, we're short one part-time parking enforcement officer. We have a candidate there in background right now. I'd like to get that position filled, because then we can have better evening enforcement for our parking regulations. Right now, I go out sometimes in the evenings and do enforcement, but I'm not out there every evening. That used to be my job. I was the part-time parking enforcement officer. I wrote lots of tickets. I wrote, I think in calendar year 2016, I wrote 4,200 tickets. And I was working 20 hours a week. So that gives you an idea about the amount of parking violations that occur in the evenings, and we're not really controlling that right now. So I am concerned about that.
If I could just add, we also, adding that position would also free us up for some educational outreach. I would say that's one of the things that we really want to add, is more educational outreach.
Great, thank you.
Now, Councilmember Kostick.
Thank you for being here. And I have to say, of all of the agenda items that I have notified people about, this is the one that I think the most residents have contacted me with questions about, so code enforcement is near and dear to their hearts. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. In the slides that you showed, I didn't see anything specifically about noise and light, which are complaints I get a lot from people. Does that fall under the property management category, or is that a different category?
The noise regulation is in the code 8.1, is it 8.42, 8.14? It's in our city code.
So of, in your slide, is that when you listed the numbers of things that you had gone through, and you had the number of property maintenance violations and other things that you'd addressed, where does noise, for example, and light complaints, where do those fall?
Well, we classify it as a nuisance.
A nuisance?
Yeah, nuisance, yeah.
And we talked a little bit about the MyTKPK app. I was looking at that just this week, and I appreciate your help with some of the questions I had for residents who were complaining about noise situations. There isn't currently a way to report noise complaints on MyTKPK. When you click on it, it just says, call the police department. So if there's a way that we can make it possible for people to put through a complaint there, I know some noise complaints probably make sense to call the police department immediately. You know, if somebody's got really loud music or there's something going on. But there are some other situations where it's like a garbage truck or a loud muffler, you know, lack of a muffler or whatever that's going on. So if there were a way to add that, I think that would be useful. And then, as you mentioned, it would be easier to have that tracking in the system.
Right.
Let me see, I had a couple of other things here. In terms of sidewalk vegetation, do you go on a regular, is there a process of regularly inspecting the sidewalks? Or does that sort of happen randomly or mostly from complaints from residents?
Complaint from residents, random, and then the one time we really make a strong effort to come out and inspect the sidewalks is right before school starts. We inspect all the sidewalks right before school starts, because all the children are going to be walking to school. We want them to have clear pathways.
Great. I might also recommend, if you have the bandwidth to do it, if you could do that maybe sometime in the spring, as the new vegetation is kind of coming up and starting to overgrow.
We've been doing it.
That would be great. Great.
Our newest enforcer's been doing it.
Okay, great. And then, one resident, I know you don't have the capacity to answer this right now, but maybe we could follow up. One resident had asked me a little bit about the financial aspects of code enforcement and the revenue that's coming into the city. So if we could get just some, if you could just follow up with some email, in an email with some information, I think that'd be helpful.
Certainly we can do that. This will also be part of the budget presentation, because we get certain revenues and we show, they go into different places than the expenses, but we show how they kind of offset, especially with parking.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, ma'am. I just had one quick question. What nights do you do parking enforcement?
We rotate.
Never mind.
And which streets will you be on? Councilmember Kovar?
I forgot to ask one other question, actually relates to parking. On the 72-hour warning question, this is when someone's vehicle is parked on the street in the same spot for 72 hours, but they do have a permit, I guess, for that area? Is that right? One of the things that's come up that I've heard from residents about is when there's snow, for example, and people can't park where they normally do it in front of the house, and they're parked somewhere else nearby, or when, you know, there's construction happening and they can't do it, and so they had to be elsewhere, and folks who don't have driveways, et cetera, and they've gotten tickets. Is there a way to somehow, and I don't know whether this is something more for the chief, but to be aware of that and not give tickets in those situations?
Yeah, we have, in the past, we've, when we knew there's going to be construction going on in certain areas, we alert all the officers to not ticket in that area for the duration of the construction. We do make special exemptions now and again.
During the recent sidewalk repairs, there were incidents where they were given tickets despite that, and I think in the snow is another one that's hard to predict, but I just offer that as something to consider for the future. Thanks.
Okay. Can I, I have a question about the new door hanger on the courtesy notice. How long you've been doing that?
I guess after, I started in March of last year. Probably it took me about a month to come up with that, maybe two months, worst-case scenario. So since...
Since like summer?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So when we discussed this as a council a number of years ago to create the Neighborhood Services Division, one of the things, and I was glad to see your last slide, that many of us, myself included, who voted to go in this direction, really liked the emphasis on educational and the outreach. And so I'm glad to see that that's being done. I do think with some of our residents, there is still a lot of focus on the enforcement that you do, the code enforcement, which is a very important piece of it. But one of the things I noticed on the courtesy notice is the police shield at the top, and I'm just wondering, because what I hear from residents is that it feels like a violation even though it's a courtesy notice. And so there may be some way of thinking about it in terms of Neighborhood Services, you know, and emphasizing that piece of it, the education, the outreach, which is all the things you're doing, but there, for some residents, not all of them, a perception more of the penalizing and the violation. And that's not what I'm hearing you're doing with the courtesy notices and everything else, but there's still that perception out there, and I think we're fighting against that a little bit. And so just a suggestion, I had not, luckily I've not received a courtesy notice, so I didn't know what they looked like, and I just noticed that, and so there may be some things to consider there.
I was hoping that the first line that we put in there when it says, we would like to help you avoid a violation, would kind of make people feel comfortable, but sometimes, I've had phone calls where people were very upset that they got a courtesy notice.
Sometimes when you say this is not something, they...
Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah, that's what they think it is.
You're trying to trick me, aren't you? You know, it's not like that.
Great.
I'm not sure how many we've mass-produced, but we can look at any ones that we make from here out that might have something else on the top that's a little more friendly. I'm not sure what that is, but we can figure out something.
It's a work in progress.
Oh, yeah. No, I think it's a, honestly, I think it's a huge improvement over the years, because I do think there has been, as you said, when you came on board, a tendency to go right to the NOVs, and that was really jarring for people. And I think having the courtesy notice and then having people call and working through the problem with them, I'm glad we moved in that direction, so...
I think it's a friendly approach, and I think it's really more effective.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Dabala?
Yeah, sorry to come around again, but as I'm listening to Councilmember Circe and Smith talk about multifamily housing, when we get to that part of the Housing and Strategic Plan Work Session, it might be helpful to double back and ask what, from your perspective, sort of what are the issues in terms of maintaining the multifamily housing stock? What do you see as common themes? What are you always getting complaints about? You know, just sort of to help us to figure out what to focus on within multifamily. Not tonight, but the next time around.
Great. Oh, and I forgot one other thing. Everybody's going around twice again tonight, but on the Dear Management Program, that was a huge success, and if we can do it again, I think there were a number of residents who really wanted to be at that, and I know we recorded it, but I think asking the representative from the state was really helpful. So I got really good feedback. And it's your third time.
Yeah. In fact, it never got recorded, so...
Oh, it didn't? Oh, now we definitely have to have it back.
There was another thing I was going to mention. I'm glad you did. Let's make sure it's recorded if we do it again.
Yeah, because that was the...
He wouldn't do it.
Oh, he won't do it?
The state representative didn't want it to be recorded.
Well, then we got to find someone else, because...
Wow, okay, well, I heard he was really good.
I can try to find somebody else.
Yeah.
And if you give us, when you get the dates for the others this spring, I'm sure some of us would be...
They're going out on all of our media.
Yeah, we'd be happy to send them out on listservs.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, and now we'll turn it over to our police chief to walk through the police department's annual report for calendar year 2017.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know, I'm Tony Daball. I'm the new police chief here in the city of Tacoma Park. It's a pleasure to be here and present our annual report. I'd like to thank all the staff members and community members that have provided a warm welcome. As many of you know, this is my hometown, but the warm welcome that I've felt from everyone has made it very easy to transition back. Since I took over in January, we have assessed what is working and what is not working within the police department. We've come up with several things that we think will make the police department work a little bit more efficiently. Some of it has to do with structure, some of it has to do with additional positions, but it's very important that we get the police department back to the level that we think it should be. It's, Tacoma Park Police Department is very well-respected both nationally and regionally, and I think that it's important that we are that cornerstone of respect as far as policing. As an agency, as you know, we're committed to community policing and outreach. Since I've been here, we've increased our partnership with the schools. We now have a direct partnership with every school in the city. We established the Chief's Advisory Board, which I think is really important, to have that outside connection to citizens. We've also made a connection with the Tacoma Park Youth Council, who I think is an important entity, and we're planning some events with them. I think it's extremely important that this relationship with our stakeholders are cultivated and continued through community policing. One of the things we're going to be looking for is a cop's police officer. Community policing is the job of every officer and every staff member of the police department, but we think it's very important that we have one officer that can funnel all of the police activities and all of our events, National Night Out, and all of the various community events that we're going to talk about later. One person to coordinate those. So you're going to be seeing that request in our budget request. As an agency, we're committed to transparency, and that's why we're excited to bring you this annual report. Let me get into, as you know, the purpose of the report is to provide information about our police department and about crime in the city of Tacoma Park, accomplishments of the police department, and so on and so forth. We've seen a slight increase, or excuse me, decrease in reported crime over the last year. I'm pleased to announce that violent crime has decreased. That's really critical. And before we get into the annual report, I wanted to give some definitions, because sometimes people are confused about different definitions about what a Part 1 crime is, what a Part 2 crime is, and so on and so forth. So basically, Part 1 crimes are serious crimes. There are aggravated assaults, forcible rapes, murders, robberies, arsons, burglaries, et cetera, serious crimes. Our Part 2 offenses are less serious crimes, simple assaults, thefts, curfew violations, driving under the influence, drug offenses, and so on. So as I go through the report, just so you understand what I'm talking about, Part 1 offenses, those are our serious offenses. When I'm talking about Part 2, those are our less serious offenses. Two definitions I also wanted to give was the definition of robbery and burglary. Sometimes people get these confused, so I want to make it clear what a robbery is and what a burglary is. A robbery is the taking or attempting to take anything of value from the care, custody, or control of a person or persons by force or threat of force or violence, and the putting or putting the victim in fear. That is a robbery. A burglary or breaking and entering is when the, an unlawful entry of a structure to commit a felony or theft. Attempted forced entry is included. So when some people say, my house was robbed, it wasn't necessarily robbed, it was burglarized. So let's get into a little bit of stuff. I think it's very important, before we start, that I read our mission statement, because I think that's the key of what the backbone of the police department is. And the Tacoma Park Police Department is committed to providing the highest quality of police services by promoting an environment where police department employees in the community work in partnership with a goal of improving the quality of life within our expanding multi-ethnic community, while at the same time maintaining respect for the diversity, individual rights, and dignity of all residents. I think it's very important that everyone knows that that is the mission of the police department. We're committed to be working in partnership with the community and each other to resolve issues and problems which impact public safety and the quality of life within our neighborhoods. We are further committed to nurturing the public trust and holding ourselves accountable to the highest standards of professionalism, ethics, and integrity. And I know that that may have seemed corny, but I think it's very important that all of the citizens know that's what we're committed to. And as we go about our policing, as the city has committed itself to racial equity, we as well, the way we police is through the racial equity lens. We're making sure that we're treating everyone equal in all of our interactions. As I get into the numbers, as I said earlier, Part 1 crimes have gone down slightly this year. As you can see, the total Part 1 crimes reported for the year 2017 were 495. It's down slightly from 2016, where there was 497 total Part 1 crimes. And as you can see, we had no homicides in 2017, slight increase in rapes, a slight increase in robberies, a significant decrease in assaults, a significant decrease in burglaries. Larcenies are significantly up, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Unauto thefts are a little bit down. If you look over a four-year period, you'll see a significant decline in crime, or Part 1 crimes in the city. If you look at the year 2014, there were 664 Part 1 crimes committed in Tacoma Park. 2015, 617. 2016, 497. And this year, 2017, 495. We're very proud of our efforts to bring down crime over the last four years. As you can see, we've gone from 664 Part 1 crimes to 495. If you want to break down crime by ward, 30%, as you can see, is in Ward 6, 24% in Ward 1, and so on. I don't know if we wanna go, if you guys have any questions specifically about your ward, I'm gonna kind of skip over ward-specific numbers, but I just can say Ward 1 accounts for about 24% of Part 1 crimes. Ward 2 accounts for approximately 10% of Part 1 crimes. Ward 3 approximately 20%. Ward 4, 6%. Big woo-hoo there? Ward 5, 10%. No woo-hoo from Ward 5. Ward 6 accounts for 30%. And this data comes from the UCR, the Uniform Crime Report, and that's where we get all these numbers from. And if you're looking at the charts, these are just charts that are very hard to read about our UCR and individual crime status, statistics, I say. If you're looking at controlled states of substance arrests in the city, those are basically drugs. 99% of our arrests are adults, 1% are juveniles. And if you look by ward, you can see the breakdown as well below. Once again, if you look at arrests in the city overall, 93% of our arrests are adults, 7% are juveniles, and there's a breakdown by ward of number of arrests. Once again, information by ward. Our automated speed enforcement technology, I can go into detail, I think everyone knows about our programs. If you have any questions at the end, we'd be happy to answer those. Obviously, we have several corridors which we have cameras equipped. I think the most significant thing for 2017 is our citations have gone down from 42,000 to about 36,000. We also have a nationwide prescription drug take-back program here. We have a box that on any given day, people can drop their drugs. We also have a drug take-back day, if there are any questions about that. New sworn officers. We've sworn in four new officers in 2017. Stephen Kibbe and Brian Hernandez were sworn in on January 19th. Malik Bayeth and Robert Antis were sworn in on August 2nd. We have some emergency management information. We have our Emergency Management Manager, Mr. Ron Hardy, here to answer any questions you may have regarding our emergency management program. There are a lot of statutory mandates that affected the police department and the city. If you have any questions about those, they are in the packet. Community outreach, and I think this is the backbone. I'm gonna take some time to go extensively over what we've done here. We have several community outreach programs. Our Community Police Academy, which the mayor and councilmember Kasich is involved in, and I commend our staff for putting this together. I think it's really important that we have the community involved in understanding what we do policing-wise, and I don't know if any of you wanna make a comment on that program at the end, but I think it's a fantastic program. Click-It Our Ticket Program is a campaign during the month of May to increase seatbelt awareness. We have the public notification list is to sign up for the police department link and email address to get alerts. As you know, we're very active on Twitter and very active with putting out alerts for situational awareness for our citizens. I think that's extremely important that our citizens are aware of what's going on, and that's something we're committed to doing. Home security surveys, obviously, we offer those. I think that's very important that we, all of our residents, understand having a safe, secure residence is important. We also do house checks if you're on your way on vacation. That's something that you're not gonna get from a larger agency. One of our cornerstone events is National Night Out. It's my understanding that the event here at Tacoma Park, I don't wanna say was rained out, there was some crazy storm that hit this area.
Rain is an understatement.
It was kinda like a tsunami specific to Tacoma Park, but that is a great annual event to bring together police and the community. So hopefully this year, we will not have the Tacoma Park tsunami. As I mentioned earlier, the Police Advisory Group, our Advisory Board, we put that back together. I think that's very important that we have citizens with input on the police department and the operation of the police department. And there are also conduits to bring back information to the police department, to correct some urban myths sometimes, and to just get the message straight. Sometimes it's good for me to hear the finger of the pulse of the community, and I'm not necessarily out there and about. When we have 12 to 14 people that are, it makes it very beneficial for the operation of the police department. We also participate and take 25 awareness. It's celebrated in the month of May, and it recognizes Natural Center for Missing and Exploited Children. It raises awareness of child safety, encourages parents to take 25 minutes of their time to educate their children on the importance of personal safety. This is one that's near and dear to me. I have three kids that are still school age, 11, 9, and 7, and this is extremely important, and I hope that all the parents understand the importance of educating their children. The Junior Police Explorers, which is a great program started by Captain Collington, I commend him, he's doing a fantastic job with the kids. If you have any questions, he's here to answer those questions. It's for kids aged 14 to 21. I believe we had our first deaf junior explorer in the history of the Explorer Program go through. So extremely proud of that, extremely proud of the program. Several of our explorers participated in the polar bear plunge, which was not pleasant at any age. I would say the older you get, the harder it is, but some of them looked like they were, they were suffering. Unity in the Community was another event that Captain Collington orchestrated. It was a great event that brought together pretty much everybody within the city of Tacoma Park, and a great event, and it just really showed what the community was about. I know, Mayor, you were intimately involved in that, as well as Megan Murphy and others. That was a great event. There's a theme here, but another event coordinated by Captain Collington is our Homework Study Program. That's done once a week now. We have the goal of trying to expand that or possibly incorporate that into the Rec Department Program, so we can access more kids and have more resources. Like I said, right now, it's only done once a week, so it's a kind of a work in progress, but that is a great outlet to have positive interaction with youth, and I commend Captain Collington and other staff for doing a fantastic job with that. Our Officer of the Year for this year, I wanted to recognize him as Officer Afaldi, Afalo, I always mess his name up. I apologize for that, but he's done a fantastic job. You can see his statistics in the packet, just amazing, amazing combination of enforcement and community outreach. A lot of officers think that you can't combine the two. We're still police officers, we're still responsible for doing writing tickets and locking people up, but the backbone is treating people the right way in community policing, and he exemplified the combination of both. The Civilian of the Year, and many of you know her, she works tirelessly as Diana Dean, our Victim Witness Coordinator. She's done a fantastic job, again, for those of you who know her, just she does a fantastic job relating to victims. It's a very difficult job, but she did a fantastic job this year. Kudos to her. Now, we have some information on National Night Out. Once again, I won't go into the tsunami or whatever we want to call it. Statistics for our Criminal Investigation Section are in here. If you look, we have a pretty high closure rate of 59%. If you look at what they've done, they've closed 111 cases, which is exceptional, and they've made 59 arrests. Our SAT team is very active in seeking out people that have warrants, and they've done a fantastic job. There are several notable arrests that you'll see. If you have any specific questions about any of the important arrests, please address them. We have Captain Frisk on here from our Investigative Services Section that can give specific information on those. And once again, our Special Attachment Team, which is our plainclothes team, is very active in plainclothes apprehension, fugitive apprehension, and so on. They supplement our plainclothes people, because a lot of times, they're able to see things, obviously, that officers in uniform can't. Sometimes you may not even know that you're in a store with them. Some of them really blend in with their beards and tattoos and are hard to see. And they've made some notable arrests as well, if you have any specific questions about those. I think, I'm gonna touch on this use-of-force activity, because I think this is very important. Use-of-force incidents in the city, we've only had eight reported use-of-force incidents. And use-of-force, as you know, is defined as any secondary weapon, any physical strikes, pointing a taser or firearm in the clear direction of an individual, non-deadly force without a weapon that results in apparent physical injury or purported claim of injury, deadly force, any intentional or unintentional discharge of a firearm, K-9 deployment with injuries, use of a firearm to euthanate an injured rabid wild animal, or any material difference in description of force reportedly used by an officer and reported by a subject upon whom the force was used. So in the calendar year 2017, we had eight use-of-force incidents. And I wanna note this, because this is important. Tacoma Park Police Officers had a total of 14,200 contacts with the public, which included calls for service, self-initiated calls, and traffic stops. The Tacoma Park Police Officers used force in .056% of all incidents. So .05% of all incidents resulted in a use of force. And I think that goes a long way, not only for our officers' training, but the relationship our officers have with the community and their ability to defuse situations without using force. There's statistics in here for victim-witness information, if you all have any questions about that. Our Operations Division, which is the backbone of our, with the backbone of our agency, which is our Patrol Division, all of our uniform folks, under that, we have our K-9 unit. Under the Operations Division is the Honor Guard. The Honor Guard participates in ceremonial funerals. Most recently, they participated in the funeral for the fallen Prince George's County Officer. They also participate in Police Memorial Week activities. It's a very important unit, because I think that it's very important to recognize the sacrifice police officers make, and I think it's very important, especially when a police officer is taken out of the line of duty, to show support for that police officer and their family. That's another unit that's organized by Captain Collington, and several members of our agency that participate in the Honor Guard. Crash data, and there is, as you can see, there is, our main corridors, Philadelphia Avenue and Hampshire Avenue, you see the vast majority of our crashes. That is not surprising. There are a total of 250 crashes have been recorded by the Tacoma Park Police Department, and if you have any questions specifically about the map, obviously, the northern part of Tacoma Park on University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue corridors and the junction between Pine Branch Road and Philadelphia Avenue are hotspots. Those are our main commuter routes, and that's why you see that type of, that large number of incidents. As you can see, type of crashes, 71% were property damage crashes. Those are crashes where people are not injured, but the car is damaged, and 29% were injury-related crashes. We won't go into some of this other data. Let's see. Go back. Our Administrative Services Division basically just is the support services of the police department, our records, dispatch, so on and so forth. And Dispatch-CAT events went down slightly. In 2016, we had 8,568. They went down slightly to 8,056 in calendar year 2017. Self-initiated activity is down from 8,769 calls. Self-initiated activity is when the officer status is themselves out, or is on a traffic stop. They've gone down by about 2,000. One of the most important things we have in a police department is our training. In addition to the 18 hours that's required by the Maryland Police Training Commission, I'm dedicated to finding training for our officers. I think it's extremely important. One of the first trainings that we're gonna bring for all officers is dealing with disabled adults and children. It's very, very important. Councilmember Dabala and I attended a meeting with parents of adult children with disabilities last week, and we came up with a way to the police department can partner with those individuals to identify them and get to know the police officers, so when we have an incident, we're aware that somebody had disabilities, it's not something else. So that's extremely important. But training, I think, for officers is what makes the agency a professional agency. So we're gonna seek out as much training as we possibly can to try to increase the professionalism of the agency. Of note, as far as training, Captain Rick Bowers attended the prestigious FBI National Academy last year. Less than 1% of all law enforcement executives, I'll say that again, less than 1% of law, all law enforcement executives go through that training. It is an elite training that is very difficult to get into. It's a 10-week on-campus training. You have to live there. It's like going through college and a boot camp all in one. I went through it in 2015, and it is a tremendous accomplishment, so kudos to Captain Bowers. Our goal is to try to rotate a command officer through this program every two years. I think it's extremely important. It brings, once again, it brings professionalism back to the agency and also brings back networking back to the agency. Last but not least is our Neighborhood Services Team. I will not go through that since you just had a comprehensive overview. I just wanna sum it up by saying, as I said earlier, as the new police chief, I was tasked with looking at what works and what doesn't work. And a lot of what we have here does work. There are a lot of very, very committed individuals that work here that want the police department to be the elite police department it should be. And our goal is to collectively involving everyone in the police department, everyone in the community, and everyone that's sitting here, in making this the police department the elite police department that it should be. Like I said, we've taken steps to evaluate our general orders, our structure, and things that we think will make this police department what it should be. Part of that, and I know Terry will be happy to hear this, is reviewing the possibility that we, some type of accreditation. The first step in that is reviewing our general orders and making sure that we're ready to make that next step. So that's the first step. So I thank you for that, and I'm open to any questions, and I have staff here to ask specific questions about any respective section that they supervise.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. So now, my computer is definitely off. So it's been going on and off all night, so if you wanna ask the chief a question, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Councilmember Smith?
Chief, thank you for the presentation. I just wanna say that it's great that you're here with us. I appreciate all the community policing focus, and I wanna thank Captain Collington for all his hard work in the community. What is really important is to make sure that you have what you need when you start off on this position, so that you can get it right. So you have said that you want this cop's position. Is there any other budget ask that you have?
Keep pouring on, pouring on.
As a matter of fact, there is.
Oh, really?
As we evaluated the structure of the police department, there currently is a position on the books for a deputy chief and a position on the books for a lieutenant. Neither of those positions is filled. The current workflow of the police department is not conducive to an effective operation of the police department. So what we're gonna be asking for is the one cop's officer, as well as one lieutenant's position. This lieutenant's position would supervise the patrol section, the main backbone of the agency. Our goal is to get a second lieutenant to have a firmer chain of command. I also would like to fill a deputy chief. I'm not asking for that as a position, it's currently on the books. We would repurpose another position. So this year, what I really need is, I need those two positions. I think that's integral. I also would like to see that half a position for that parking enforcement, and mainly to free up our staff to be, get out and educate the public. Because that's one thing, I think, we're okay in the ticket-writing component, but I think a lot of what we hear from citizens is because they don't really know. So I think the more they know about our Neighborhood Services Team, the more they know about enforcement, the easier it will be and the better relationship our Neighborhood Services Team will have with the community. So those are the things I think that are very important right now. I think the thing we need from you all is support as we, as you all hear stuff, facilitating those communications. I've come out and I've spoken at several different community groups, and I'm open any night of the week to come out. I have one tomorrow night. I've had one just about every week since I've been here. 10 people, 100 people, five people, I'm open to it. The more people we can meet with, put a face to, and develop relationships, I think that is what is gonna be required to get us back to where we need to be. And it's not just me, it's knowing every one of my officers as well. I think that's important as well, and I think I need to lead by example, and that's what I expect to do. But I expect every officer to understand that they're representing the police department, and they need to be, their actions need to be consistent with a guardian mentality, not a warrior mentality. Good. In your presentation, you didn't talk about it, but there was an investigation in my ward, ongoing heroin investigation. All I'll say is, I just hope the department maintains focus on that area, because it has been a problem for a long, long time. What happens is, the police department comes in, they clean it up, and then because of the way that building is configured, it could take a year, two years, and once again, you have the same issues. So I wanna thank your officers for all the hard work and, you know, bringing in inter-agency assistance on this issue, but please, don't stop.
I hear you loud and clear. And one of the most important things I've learned as a police officer is, once you eradicate the problem, the problem is not going to stay away. You need to make sure it stays away. So I think we need to talk offline and make sure that we understand a strategy going forward that makes sure that that activity does not come back.
Excellent. All right. And then finally, regarding the FBI training, how are you going to pick which other officers are gonna get an opportunity? Is it gonna be just random, or are officers going to, you know, be slotted in like a queue or something?
That's a very good question. Normally, when we have multiple people that want to go, in our size agency, you have to be a sergeant or above to be. go, in our size agency, you have to be a sergeant or above to be able to go to the, the National Academy. So what I've done is I've, I've begun the process of identifying, identifying people that would like to go. So what they do is they get in a queue, and then when we are given a slot, what we'd have is a competitive process to see who's going to go. We would have an interview process, and then we would select the person. We basically are given a, a slot by the, by the FBI. It is up to us to decide who we're going to send. But I think it's extremely important that we are very selective in who we send. Like I said, it's an elite program that's very difficult, and that person is representing the city. So we want to make sure we do our due diligence and send the right person.
And thank you, Chief, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Smith?
Oh, well, I have no idea where anybody was. So we're going to just go down here and go back. Okay? So you go first.
All right.
They'll get their pants. They're not, we're not going.
I'm, I'm here all night.
It's, it's great to have you here, and, and it's great to hear the focus on community policing. Um, and I know that you mean it about getting out in the community because you've already agreed to do, now this is going to be a second thing for me, which is a Ward Two meeting. Um, and I, I encourage everybody else to take advantage of, of his good nature while he's still got it.
It's not going anywhere.
Uh, one of the things that's, that's important to residents in Ward Two is responsiveness for intractable, um, crimes. Uh, and I'm, I know that we've talked about this, but is there anything you want to say to the group? And before you say that, larceny as opposed to robbery is what?
Uh, larceny is when force is not used.
Okay, so larceny is robbery without force?
Yeah, the difference would be you, you left your purse on a park bench and someone came and took it, as opposed to your purse was on your person and someone by force snatched it off you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, so back to the, the question about responsiveness. Is there anything that you want to say about how you're working on that now? Because I know you are.
And I think it's extremely important that, um, in any call, whether it be a police-related call, and we talked about this the other night, our officers, the answer should never be, "I can't help you." Um, we should find a way to do something. Even if it's not a police-related call, we should do whatever we can to help someone. If we don't have the right answer, we should tell them we don't have the right answer. But I don't want an officer ever to walk away from a call saying it's not our problem. Because it, it is. Um, so I think that, that goes back to just what we need to emphasize to our officers as far as customer service, as far as responsiveness. Uh, it's a work in progress, but it's something that I, I'm committed to making sure that, that we provide the customer service that people expect.
And you have this great victim assistance program, but then on the follow-up with, if, if the crime's not solved, but following up with residents, every now and then a little check-in, just so people know that you're, you still care. That would be really important to me.
We hear the citizens loud and clear that sometimes they want, even if there's no information, they want to hear something. I think that's important, and it's not necessarily solving their issue, but it's at least acknowledging that we still are aware that they have an issue.
Okay. Councilmember McCollough?
Thank you for being here. I have a bunch of questions. I'll probably send some in writing. I, I do want to say that I was at a recent meeting the other night on Grand Avenue, and there were probably about eight to 10 people there. So the chief is, uh, being honest when he says that he'll show up for any size group, and it was a really great discussion. The mayor was there also. Um, I thought the report was really well-done, and I in particular liked reading everything that the victim assistance officer is doing. Plus, the descriptions of the arrests were, were really fascinating, and I think gave a great example of, or illustration of the work that, that your folks do. One of the things I noticed with the, the crime data in the early part of the report was, it does seem as if Ward Six, One, and Three, on average, have higher levels with some exceptions than the others. And those all really are heavily on the borders. Is that, I mean, obviously, we all border Montgomery County too, but is that a factor that they border Prince George's and the District, or is that just a coincidence, do you think?
I, I, I mean, there, there, I, I wouldn't say it was a coincidence. I, I think there's, um, I, obviously, it's a, it's a, there's a denser areas in some areas, and I think the fact that, that there are close borders makes it easier for to commit a crime and cross borders. Uh, one of the things that we're really working on is communication with other agencies, especially Prince George's and the District of Columbia. I think it's very important that we have real-time information to avoid, you know, the, the availability to commit a crime in Tacoma Park and then flee into DC or flee into, to Prince George's County. So I think we're working on that. So yeah, I think, yes and no. Um, but I, I think that, yeah, it does play some part of it. But like I say, I think, um, like I say, it's very important that we are working together with Prince George's and the District of Columbia. Um, I've communicated with both of their police chiefs and working on an MOU, so during times of crisis, we're able to communicate directly, and we're able to share resources. Um, I, you know, I wish our crime analyst was here to better define kind of trends. I'm, I'm really not the one to say yes or no or define trends, but, um, if you shoot me an email or specifically what you're looking for, I can have our crime analyst take a look at it and get back to you.
So, but in a general matter, in an area where the crime maybe is at a higher level, residents just sort of seem to say, "Why can't there be more patrols or more visibility?" To what extent is that even the right question to ask or the right way to think about?
That, that's a very good question. We have a very active crime analyst who, based on crime data, gets the information out real-time to our officers. So when we do have crimes, uh, crime sprees in certain areas, we've had a rash of catalytic converter thefts in an area. So obviously, we have increased patrols in that area. We have the luxury of having that crime analyst to tie these crimes together. So when we do have an increased area that has seen increased thefts, increased incidents, we obviously increase our patrols there, both covert patrols as well as uniform patrols. So that response is always there. Uh, the fact that one area has a little bit more crime than others, I can't really define, but I will tell you this definitively, when we do have problems, we do allocate resources to address the problems.
So one of the, and one of the descriptions of the high-profile arrests, um, and I noticed that the burglaries, which had been one of the areas, a few that had maybe gone up a bit last year, has definitely dropped way down from the previous year. Um, and I think it's connected to maybe a particular individual. But the little description wasn't 100% clear. Is that person actually in prison or in custody, or I'm not sure?
I don't know. Captain Frisco may be able to shed some light on whether or not the individual that was involved in a, a lot of burglaries within the city, whether or not he's incarcerated now, or whether or not he's, I don't, I think he is, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's incarcerated or not. He had, we had connected him with like 40 burglaries, and that's why it went down. Um, historically, over in that area, over in the area near Eastern Avenue, DC, we've had burglary issues. Um, I'm not, I don't know what his status is now, but, uh, he was charged with numerous burglaries, and that's why we had a significant increase.
A couple of other things. Um, Chief, thank you for this. You and I had talked some about the, um, dangerous intersections and so on, and a lot of them are at, involve state highway, which gets complicated. But it looks like the most common citations were for stop line, stoplight, and stop sign violations. So, I mean, I, I live right by a stop sign, and people just sort of drive through. Any suggestions about, other than, you know, making people go back to driving school to get people to?
You know, education sometimes works. In this particular case, uh, starting out with warnings and then writing tickets is probably the best educational outreach. Um, you gave me the list of about 20 intersections. A lot of them involve a state highway.
Yeah.
A lot of them are working on signage and other, um, educational, um, initiatives. I think it's very important that we start out with educating the public. A lot of people do the California stop, which is a, we slow down and go through. Um, that's dangerous, but the ones that are really dangerous are the ones that don't stop at all. They don't even look. They just bust through the intersection. So, um, some of our problem intersections, Holly and Philadelphia and some of the other ones, our traffic officer and our patrol officers are actively involved in traffic enforcement, and I can provide statistics on how many times we've been out, how many tickets we've issued. It's a difficult situation because, um, it's not just Tacoma Park issue. It's a community issue where people tend to not understand the importance of stopping at stop signs. Um, it's extremely dangerous.
Thank you. Last question then, just on training. There were a couple of issues, and I assume they're in there, but they weren't highlighted. Maybe you can just talk about that. So it was constitutional issues, youth sensitivity, de-escalation of dangerous situations, and, and maybe you could say something about the active shooter, although that was in there. It's something that we started thinking about.
The good thing about being in this region is all of our officers, the Montgomery County Police Department and the unified police agencies in Montgomery County, early on, uh, way back in Columbine, took the initiative to train all of our officers in active shooter. We were the, one of the first local collaborations of agencies. I was with the park police at the time. We sent all of our officers through. The city of Tacoma Park sent all of their officers through. But it's very important right now to re-engage our officers in understanding what to do. Not only what to do, but ensuring that they have the proper equipment if they do need to go in. And assuring that the schools are aware of what we're going to do. So, uh, we have a meeting again next week with the school principals, and that's going to be a topic of conversation. Um, hopefully during the summer, we can have an active shooter, uh, scenario, practice scenario at one of our schools. Um, I think it's very important that all of our officers knows the ins and outs of the school, so when they go in, they know where which hallway goes, what classroom is, where the, the locker rooms are, and so, so on and so forth. It is high up upon my list of priorities to make sure that our officers, number one, train, number two, have the equipment they need, and we're collaborating with the schools. Lord forbid something happen here.
And for the, um, like constitutional issues and rights of residents and so on, is that emphasized as well?
Uh, we, we always emphasize, um, the constitutional rights in dealing with people in a respectful manner. Um, I think that we're going to reemphasize that and just to have some, it's good to have scenarios where you go through scenarios and you, and you deal with people just to see how you might react. Uh, one of the things that's very important is implicit bias in dealing with how can we deal with implicit bias within our officers. And there's a lot of new training that's coming out that I, we think is very beneficial. I mean, everyone has biases, but we don't understand our implicit biases. And we don't understand how they impact how we interact with others. So my goal is to get training on implicit bias and have some scenarios. But it's very important that our officers continually get the understanding that they need to be respectful, they treat every citizen the same. Um, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Keep going down the line.
All right. Thank you. Um, and thank you. Welcome. Uh, and thank you for being here tonight. I, uh, first of all, have to commend, uh, your staff, the officers and the civilians who work in the department. The report tonight is refreshing to see that, uh, not that I can give you a whole lot of credit for it since you got here just recently, but your, your staff certainly deserved a lot of credit.
They did a great job.
Yeah. Um, I have a dozen things I'd like to talk to you about tonight, so I just wanted to let you know. I'll take the short version on the answers. Uh, first, I just wondered if, um, this is the same mission statement we had, or if you revised that since you've joined us?
Uh, it is the same mission statement, but I looked at it and I really like it. I, I think that, that, um, you know, we, we need to identify our uniqueness as a community, but respecting people and respecting, um, that interaction, the stressing of community policing. I may tweak it up a little bit, but I didn't feel a need.
All right, great. Um, and you mentioned, uh, restarting the chief's advisory committee. Um, one of the problems that, uh, people have talked to me about in the past is kind of a, a feeling that it was the chief's committee, not the community committee, and that, uh, the chief's, um, aura overwhelmed the committee and didn't, didn't necessarily end up with a committee that really gave good advice. It, uh, kind of echoed what the chief wanted to hear. And so I'm wondering, uh, how you envision this committee members being appointed, uh, and how you see the committee being run?
Um, that's a great point. Of the 14 people that were on the committee previously, nine have, um, stated interest in continuing on the committee. Uh, my goal in configuring the committee is having every ward represented. I want to have every age group represented. We're reaching out to the younger folks. I really want to have someone in the 16 to 21 range. But I see no need to go hear myself talk. I know what I want to do. I don't need to go and tell 14 other people what I want to do. I wouldn't put the chief's committee together if I did not want to hear from people. Um, I envision listening, not talking. I want to solicit feedback from the people on the group, and I want them to go back out to the community and solicit more feedback. I think that's what the, it's about. It's not about me telling war stories. It's, I got a bunch of them, but I'm not going to tell. Um, it's about getting that information from the 14 or so people on the committee, me understanding how that impacts the police department, and how we can implement what their suggestions are, them taking my information back out to the public and bringing information back. So for me, it's a force multiplier. When I have 14 people who talk to 14 others, it's a force multiplier of people giving me advice on how they think the police department should operate. So I don't envision this at all being the Tony DeVal show.
All right. I appreciate hearing that. Uh, I have to be honest with you. I, um, I am a little pessimistic on the, uh, the structure as it is, but I look forward to seeing it work the way you describe it. All right. Um, you mentioned accreditation, and I wasn't going to bring that up tonight, but since you did and injected my name into the discussion, um, I'd just like to point out to you that, uh, for years now, the, uh, police department has been reassuring the, uh, community and the council that, you know, accreditation doesn't really mean that much because we already do those things. We just don't have to do all the paperwork. But yet tonight here, you say, "We have to go through and make sure that our, uh, our processes, uh, meet the, uh, the requirements for accreditation." So I would just say, that doesn't give me the confidence that accreditation isn't really needed. I think it is needed, but we'll talk about that offline.
If I can just say one thing, accreditation is an evolving process. The, the proofs and requirements change from year to year. Some remain consistent, but some change. So that's part of what we're making sure that, that we are up with the change. Um, all of our policies and procedures, some need, some need review. Um, but I would argue that they would probably pass the Kalia test. Now, are they going to pass my test? There's one that I'm revising right now. That's our pursuit policy that I think is a little bit too broad. So we're looking at that. But, um, I wouldn't say that that would be an impediment. So I do think that the police department is aware of the importance of having current policies and procedures and up-to-date.
Okay. I, I thank you. We'll, uh, talk about that more offline, but I'm glad you mentioned the pursuit policy, so I can scratch that one off my list. I thought that was something that maybe needed some.
Is there anything else we can scratch off with that?
Um, you, uh, you reported in here on, on TASER use. I wanted to make sure that you were aware that the council is, has passed councils. This council hasn't revisited the subject, but has requested that all users of tasers be reported to the council. I was curious whether the, uh, two deployments that you mentioned include, include drive stuns, um, and not just, uh, the actual firing off of the?
I, I don't believe they did. I don't know if Captain Frisco is our TASER instructor much. I don't believe they did, but.
I can, I can look into that. I'm not sure, but I know at least one of them was just pointing the TASER, the laser at someone, and that's reportable under our policy.
Okay. Uh, just, again, I think it's important that the council understand, just as you do with handguns, uh, the use of tasers.
Absolutely. Understood.
Um, curious about, we have talked, previous councils have talked about, uh, you know, the changing importance of marijuana and, and marijuana arrests, and I'm, um, kind of curious. In, in the past, the council has talked about not being as, um, aggressive in, in looking for marijuana violations. And I just wonder what the, uh, the current department policy is on that.
Well, with, I'm, obviously with the recent change, um, in the amount, um, that we can obviously arrest for, um, it's changed our approach. The vast majority of people we would come across would probably have the lower threshold. But we do think it's extremely important when we do have people with large amounts, there's a lot, still a lot of violence associated with the drug dealing associated with it. So we think it's important that we really focus on that. But I wouldn't say there was a concerted effort to arrest, um, marijuana users who have very small amounts. That's not what we're about. But if there's a nexus to some type of distribution, absolutely. I think it has, there's a bigger picture in that.
All right. Appreciate hearing that. Uh, other thing, you, you had talked about vehicle accidents, uh, but I was curious about, um, police car accidents, or, you know, where our officers have been involved in accidents. And that's not something you have to off, answer off the top of your head, but I'd be interested to see, uh, how we're doing with that. Uh, that's been a problem in the past, and I'd be interested to hear how it is now and what your plans are for correcting the situation. Um, one of the things that I, uh, didn't see and hear One of the things that I didn't see in here, and is important, too, I know people in my ward, and that is demographics of the people who are in, being arrested, and, again, that's again, not something for discussion tonight necessarily. We'd like you to think about how we can maybe provide some information to the community that gives us a way to, to measure how the department is doing and how the community's doing from a demographic perspective. And then I'd just say that it's interesting to hear your suggestions for new positions. The, I'll also be interested to hear your suggestion for savings to, in money so that we can afford new positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hey, and it's after 10 o'clock. About to turn into a pumpkin. All right. Well, first, I just want to say thank you so much to, to you and to the force. I've had numerous opportunities to engage with, with the officers, from the, the undercover team to the Andrea, the, the data guru, I bow down to him. It has been just such a pleasure to work with all of your staff. I mean, they're extremely attentive, extremely responsive. To be able to have residents feel comfortable to report directly to an officer about something that is sensitive in nature and what they're seeing, and to be able to see those emails go back and forth in real time, I, I just never would have thought I would be able to see that type of engagement between residents and, and the police, and so I'm very thankful. One of the things that I, I did want to highlight is, we have had, Andrea has come to some meetings that I've had in the past and kind of walked through the Ward 6 crime stats, which was really, really helpful to provide some clarity around what these numbers really mean. And so in many instances, the larceny count is pretty high, but we also have a lot of commercial space. I know that there's, there's one hotel that is driving everyone insane, but, but it's, it's not, it's, it is the case, it is a lot of that commercial space and things that are happening in some of the businesses that are in the area that are driving the numbers. But I do think that it kind of provides some unique opportunities for kind of thinking about how we, as a city, how you, as a police, are actually working with some of these, these businesses, and I would love to hear some strategies that you all may have. I mean, if we have some problematic establishments, you know, what are some things that we can do to try to alleviate that problem? Another thing that I did see is the, the crash data. I knew it was happening, but it's nice to see it in a heat mat. So we'd had this a couple of weeks ago, we probably would have just copied and pasted and put it in a letter we sent. But one of the things that is happening in real time is, is the Purple Line construction. It's happening in the Crossroads area, and they're reconfiguring a lot of these intersections. And so one question that I do have for you is about how we can better leverage some of this data to try to help inform some of the decisions that are being made now about reconfiguring some of the, the different intersections in the area. I, I don't know to what extent you all, like, provide the crash data, and then that goes along with, you know, perhaps Daryl and some other folks who are having conversations with SHA, and how we can better leverage that data to really try to move some necessary changes to a number of the intersections that have been problematic for years. You know, if there's some way that we can try to shape the discussion, particularly with the Purple Line contractors, to make it more evidence-based, saying, "No, not just you think, no, this intersection is a problem." So I don't know if there's any evidence or any instances in which, you know, that data is being shared across the various offices.
I, I can answer that. I don't think it is being shared yet, but there is a commitment by the folks, when Mike Madden came to meet with us, and the representative from the, from the partners that do the Purple Line, to involve our police department. So I think we're having another meeting in May, at least with the council. In front of that, we'll have some other kinds of discussions, but I think that partnership discussion is essential, and, you know, they're, they don't, they're not here, so it's really helpful to have some real time. It's not just statistics, it's also the, the members of the, our officers who respond to the crashes, who can give real more, more information than just the data.
Yeah.
And that can be very helpful.
I would definitely encourage kind of creating that synergy so that when people are making decisions about reconfiguring different intersections and making necessary changes, that it's from a more informed position. Thank you.
All right, I'm last here. I want to echo everyone's thanks for being here tonight, and there have been a lot of questions, so I'm not going to belabor too much, but I just, first of all, wanted to note, you mentioned the Community Police Academy, and I wanted to thank the entire police department for all that you guys have done. It's been a wonderful experience participating in it, and I've been really impressed with the amount of staff involvement, the time that people have dedicated, the field trips that we've gone on. It's, it really surprised me. I mean, going into it, I, I think I felt a little bit like, "How can we do this for 12 weeks and sit in a room for two and a half hours every, you know, every week and actually have something to talk about?" But all of our conversations have been just really engaging and interesting, and so I really just encourage other people to do this, and want to thank everybody for all that they've done. I'd also like to see a look at kind of expanding the program in a way that would be more accessible to more people. I think it's really intimidating to think, "I'm going to sign up for 12 weeks, and I'm going to go sit in a room and learn about the police." And I think it kind of naturally fits with a certain group of people who have the time and the energy and the availability to do that. So if there were a way to look at building on that and maybe creating some, like, one day, you know, weekend, you could go in for half of the day or the whole day and do sort of a miniature version of the, of the academy, or just maybe shorten, you know, here and there, some information sessions. I think that would be really useful.
That's a great idea. What we were thinking more along the lines of a community, a, a police awareness day, where it wouldn't be as in-depth as you all are getting in the police, the Citizens Academy or Community Academy, but it would at least provide an overview of our units. We could have people from each, each unit. It's been very successful on other agencies. It's a meet and greet, it's a great community event, so we're looking at probably having one of those in the spring. I know it's probably not exactly the same, but I think it accomplishes some of the, some of the same things that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that would be wonderful. And then kind of building on that idea, I know there are a lot of great programs the police department does, like the, the security checks at people's houses, and going through and checking on properties when people aren't there for a period of time. And I think there are a lot of programs that people don't know about or aren't aware of, and there are announcements put out on the alert, you know, on the, the announcements, but I wonder if there are other ways that more outreach could be done to notify people about them, and maybe inclusion in the newsletters, things like that. I just think that those are, that's a way to really connect a lot with people and show that there is a community focus and that you're there for people, and I think that would be really helpful to advertise a little more.
That's a great point. One of the things we're looking at is our, is our Facebook. We're very active on Twitter, but where our Facebook needs some work. Our community policing section is under construction. That's just, is not acceptable. So one of the things we're looking is, is ways in which we can cultivate that outreach. A lot of it is through Facebook, social media, but the old-fashioned way works as well. So we're looking at ways, we, we recognize that there, we need to get more information out.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say again, I'm also doing the Community Academy, and it is terrific, and I agree with my colleague, it is amazing the amount of work that gets put into that. It's just, it's really terrific, and it would be great to be able to expand it in some ways. I do want to call out also, as someone else did the work on victim assistance, it is really, I mean, looking at the numbers, it is really, really remarkable. And I know sometimes that we, we hear complaints, and we're going to address that, about people getting back to, officers getting back to people, but when you look at these numbers and realize how many people are being helped in the city, it's really incredible. So thank you for that. And I just, I think everything else was said, and you answered a lot of questions, and I think as you can tell by all of our questions and comments, that we are really glad you're here and, and working, and our whole department, and we're looking forward to continuing working with you and all of our sworn officers and civilian staff, and thank you. And it's, it's getting late, so we should let you go home.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. All right, that is it for us this evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.